Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 25th meeting of the Planning Board. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and start with a roll call attendance.
Um, would you like to have done?
I was gonna do that after.
Okay, that's fine.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, also Joyce is present online.
Hi Joyce.
Hi, everyone. And so just to clarify, since there is a forum, I will be a voting member. Is that correct?
Yes, you will be a voting member. And I, at this time, I will have Donna Masucci added on as a voting member as opposed to an alternate this evening. Uh, review and approval of minutes. It was a half a forest here. Anything? Or once, twice? Motion to approve? Roll call vote?
Mr. Chairman, who would you like to second? They both? Who would you like to?
Uh, whoever said second first.
It was like, uh, okay, thank you.
Actions or extension request with 251-64-gr-SDAO-17-SR extension for Stephen Pamela Lindsey. Trust, looks like revocable trust, request by applicant for a fourth one-year extension. Is there a representative here?
Yeah, so you can either stand at the podium or at the table, whichever you feel more comfortable. The speaker should be able to pick you up on either. And um, and you can't really see it up there, but um, online you can see that he is.
Chris Davis for Everest Security Mortgage for the accessory interest, uh, varsity wireless, who was the original applicant. Can I just walk through what we're looking for with the insurer?
Okay. I guess so, yeah.
So, we had originally permitted, um, this is a fourth extension, uh, for the planning board approval around, as Selkirk, we had, uh, proposed to build, uh, at the Lindsay's property. We're, we've been through, um, a couple of extensions around. We had initial carriers originally talking about going on the site. It was T-Mobile or Sprint, um, Sprint and T-Mobile merged a few years back. We were really waiting for that budget to come back. Carriers go through kind of a periodic review of sites, um, that that merger is complete now between Sprint and T-Mobile. You're still expecting that, uh, original budget around that site that will come back, but still a pretty significant gap in coverage. One of the sites right here on the next tower is actually about four and a half miles down the road. So there's still a pretty significant gap in coverage. We ultimately think that T-Mobile will come back. Also, since we've had, uh, another carrier inquire about the site, there are also a new entrant into the market, which is, you may remember them as Dish, the little dishes on the side of your house, providing, they're actually now a wireless operator and deploying a network in New Hampshire, Massachusetts, basically across the country. So a fourth national carrier, they've expressed interest in it. We're also just waiting for their budget to come back around. So we're looking at this as really a fourth extension request. Honestly, it'll probably be the final if we're not in a position to pull a building permit. By the time we come around, uh, next year with this, we'll probably look at, uh, likely coming back to all and re-permitting the site if, you know, that's the preference of the void at that point in time. This will require us to come back in the springtime. Uh, we have a zoning, uh, approval also that's in April. We'll probably look for an extension to get us through. Um, I know that generally is done in two years, but we'd like to ultimately have them extended through the period of this, you know, that would give us a one-year extension here. And it's like mentioned, if we're not positioned to pull a building permit at that point in time, the carriers aren't ready to move forward. We'll look at other options, you know, as, as mentioned before, getting back with, uh, you know, with a full proposal for, uh, re-earning them.
Oh, okay. I guess I'll, at this point, I'll open it up to conversation with the board. Any questions anyone has for him? I know one of the questions I have is I went back and reviewed, was looking at last year's request for extension, and the language is largely the same. It talks about a second carrier, the possibility of a second carrier, but
I think that, I don't know that the second carrier was prior. I can go back and look at it. The discussion we had at that point, um, I don't think really, in fact, I'm pretty certain Dish wasn't in the picture at that point. It'd be the second carrier that we're referencing here, but that, that's who the, the second group is. I'll, I'll look at the timing of it, but I didn't realize that that was in the, uh, in the approval for the last time around, so.
It was just a reference to a second carrier potentially being involved in it or possibly looking at.
That could have been the, that could have been the reference at the time, but we've, we've definitely had more detailed discussions with them. It's just more of a permitting, you know, they've identified, part of the challenge was they've identified a number of sites that are actually built and up in the air. They prioritize, uh, sites that are built so that they can co-locate on them immediately. That's probably the reason why, uh, if that was referenced in Dish, it just wasn't referenced around this location, but we've had ongoing conversations with them that we'd ultimately, if they're ready to sign a lease, we'd ultimately have the site built, you know, go through the final process to pull a building permit and have the site built in 2023.
General thoughts on the board? I mean, this is a request for a fourth extension?
Yeah, I voted against the third, but, uh, with, I think, Dish being more real. I, I think that, to me, that, I don't remember that from the last time around. So if this is a second player that's actively, actively involved, I think I'm a little more mental.
It was the whole T-Mobile, Sprint thing too, they had to wait for, I guess, part of the deal was somebody like Dish. You know, they have a national option. Wish AT&amp;T was joining.
We, we tend to find that as one goes on, uh, the resident slowly, slowly, we've seen a similar thing from our sites in Brentwood and, uh, Gary, a couple of other nearby locations. They generally get, you know, the, the key thing for us, I think the community as well, they don't like us putting, uh, and we don't do it as a, as a habit. Varsity originally, which was my company, uh, as well as Everest now, who acquired us. We don't build towers unless we know we have the anchor tenant. We just don't want to have steel sitting in the air unused. It's, uh, it, it creates a stigma around sites that we just, you know, we don't want to propagate. We also don't like spending capital until we know we have that anchor tenant committed and if you, you've seen it in New England, uh, quite that the carriers go through budget cycles, uh, they're very lumpy. Our business can be lumpy at times. If we can get sites permitted, ready to go, and we find we sit on them for quite, you know, long, long periods of time, but I, we, we recognize the concerns about it last time around, but, um, you know, we do think there's enough momentum uh, for this fourth one, and we're, we're certainly willing to commit that, you know, if, if we're not, we don't have a carrier, we're not in a position to have it either built by this time next year, ready to go. Yeah, we'll return that.
Everybody gets a say.
Well, there's, there's more to this too, though, because we had, uh, two years of us going there, and it was locked down, right? That place.
I think the merger was the biggest part. I don't remember Dish being, you know, a significant factor last time.
I don't know if it was actually, there was a comment on it, it was just, hey, we have a potential second player was the way I think it was put out there, and that's was part of how this was driven. If somebody is looking to make one.
Got any other questions, discussion?
Is everyone okay if we do, since they're both the same application, if we do them together, or is that a?
Make a motion and, uh.
Oh, wait, do you mind if, Joyce, I don't know, do you have any comments? I don't know if you want me to check in with you since you're online? If you have any comments you would like to say?
Um, no, I don't think I see.
Okay. Okay.
I should have asked her.
That's okay.
I, I.
Yeah, sometimes technology is funny, so I just want to make sure that if you had any questions, make those adjust.
When she, it goes dark and then all of a sudden, like, I don't see her on screen.
Is it easier if I keep the camera on?
I think so, but that's up to you.
Okay.
No funny things.
Ron said he wouldn't, so it's up to you.
Make a motion, we approve the, uh, one-year extension for application, 251-64-gr/SDAO-17-SR extension.
As well as the?
As well as.
As well as. Second up.
Motion by Ron Howard, second by Tom Driscoll. Roll call vote?
Sutia.
Crystal line.
Just be right.
All right.
Happy LOI.
Now, bye.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate you considering.
Next item on the agenda is a private road application for 51 Sarah Lane, category two on a class six private roadmap, 111 lot 26. The applicant present. Floor is yours.
Hello. My name is Mark Scott. I'm a family residence. My father built on 55 is on Nibble Lake, slowly but surely, we like to fix things up. This was the season, so redo the foundation. I'm gonna do it next year, but I had a good contractor say he could squeeze it in this year. Over the last six weeks, we made tremendous paperwork progress, thanks to the lesson review people and the state of Manhattan, the DEP. I expect approval on the show when I finally done this day. That being said, that is the state of Manhattan. We'll see how that goes. And then there's something to do with the selectmen here, since I sent you people some pictures of the deteriorating foundation. So we're just looking to get that granted to do job, to do it right, you know, conscious of all the contamination things, water and what other stuff that I'm asked, so.
Just for the board, um, the pictures that he's referencing, I received them today. I left him here for you on the table. The front page has the plot plan underneath it. There's photos. Joyce, um, I apologize, I just emailed them over to you. If you would like to take a look, um, on your Barrington email, um, just have those photos.
Is the foundation gonna be the same depth as the current one, or are you going?
We're going to hold the people on the roadside, not on the lake side. We have eight feet on the lake, uh, and six feet on the roadside. To the back of the home, we're just gonna put a level cell there. So there's no more extension, no other, this is a scissor block, I'm gonna do the top board concrete, don't you know, that's about it.
Now, Vanessa, any work proposed?
No, so this is a category two, um, on the classics private road. Um, so he does not need to, um,
You're not finishing the space, correct?
No, again.
You're not finishing the space, correct?
So it's more of a recommendation of board to the select board. They're doing renovations to them.
Mark, is this the preseason or a?
Well, it's a preseason.
Preseason?
Yeah.
Yeah, a record board recommendation.
I would propose making a recommendation to the select board to approve the replacement of the foundation, um, or the parcel.
Send the letter, send.
Yep, standard letter of recommendation. Everybody in agreement? A lot of head nodding. Joyce, do you agree since it's coming to you?
Um, some clarification. So under the requirements of the class six roads, it says for category one, two, and three requires the building application. So does this not trigger a, a road improvement?
Under the category two, it's, uh, it's listed here as planning board review and select board required, um, select board decision.
In our new policy.
Right.
It's your building.
Not necessarily, no.
Explain that, Vanessa. I'm confused by this. Why, since it's a category two, why does that not trigger an improvement of the road?
Um, let me pull up the select board policy and I'll, give me a moment. I don't think it's in, oh, maybe. They are required, just to let you know that they, um, providing the municipal liability waiver. Um, that is part of the requirement in this package, and Amanda in the building department has already worked with the owner on that.
Somebody will access in the winter, where some towns follow road. We had to sign on a, I don't know, the road association does the following, for the town's foundation, we're on the fifth.
That's one of the requirements. Seeing if that applies.
Well, in category two, it was if it's not increased living space.
Yeah, they're not increasing their living space. Um.
Okay, so it would only be if it was a category three?
Right, if for a category three, that's what triggers it. Um, it's like, this is a category two.
Okay.
Cause they're not, I know, cause they're not increasing their living space.
No, they're not increasing the living space.
So that's like the shorten, but I'm just trying to find.
And they're not changing the use and the structure of the house.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else, Joyce?
No, I'm fine. Thanks for the clarification.
I, I just want to make sure that if we, if there is, it's addressed because it'll be coming before you and the board, and you're able to, if need be, explain it to the board.
Right.
Although I.
Okay, I've, I've found the policy.
I tend to go on the.
So for it to be a category two, it's improvement or replacement of existing building. Um, where the use volume and footprint remain the same, same, and as part of the applicable requirements is the application, the maintenance responsibility and liability release. Um, and then it goes planning board review and then select board decision on the consent agenda. I believe it's because they're not, um, you know, adding that additional space.
They're not changing the.
And they're changing the use.
Changing the footprint.
If they're using the existing footprint and not changing the use.
All right, I'm good.
Everybody's in agreement?
Yeah.
All right. We will, uh, send our standard letter of support to the select board and then the select board, it will be on their agenda at, not next Monday, the following Monday's meeting.
Yeah, I don't know if Tiffany got back with you or not. Okay, good, cause I didn't want to, I wasn't sure. Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Good luck. All right. Next item on the docket. Uh, reports from other committees, the master plan steering committee.
Um, if I could speak to that, Mr. Chairman, so, um, I just wanted to give an update, just wanted to give an update. Um, our master plan steering committee was hard at work. Um, our last meeting was held September 19th, and that was to get a survey for our land use and transportation chapters up and running. Um, we're gonna have, the survey is now live. Um, we're gonna unveil it at our open house on the 27th. Um, and if, I hope you can make it. If you can't, I will also be at voting on, um, November 8th. I have, John said he'd help me out, Amanda the table. Um, it's also gonna go out in the tax bill, and it'll be on our website. Um, and then I'll, I'll email it out to, to, um, if you guys have any other social media places. They are, there's, but they're, haven't got their tax rate yet, but, um, Tiffany handles the yeah, tax bills or what have, they're sending them out. So I have to give her her information to her this week. Yeah, they haven't gotten it quite yet, but it should be here like any day as well.
So you gotta wait for the new DRA rate to, in order to set the new tax rate. Which I would.
Shit, we were always, if six to seven in town to get approved, usually go back.
Yeah.
It'll, that's why at first they couldn't like guarantee us when we were at the steering committee, like when they could go out. Historically, the last two years was at the end of November, or excuse me, end of October and the beginning of November. So.
Vanessa.
Yes.
Could you ask Erin to put a, a notice on the billboard by the, uh, transfer station? Like, have you completed your master survey?
Yes. I was gonna email it out. Thank you for bringing that up, um, bring, um, for all the department heads too. I'll make sure that she can put it up for me. Thank you. And that's all I have. Um, oh, I just, I could just bring it up too, that we're gonna have our, um, community meeting in December, December, um, 10th, I believe. Um, and that'll also be advertised with the survey, and we'll be putting that out too as notice. Yeah, it's a Saturday.
You're into ski season at that point.
Hey, well.
Running my party then.
Well, it's in the morning. Well, yeah, night skiing's, it's better to go skiing morning. I got you.
And the problem is that it will run into the afternoon and it will screw up a drive up to the mountain. Just complaining.
Living, living the rough life.
First world problems. Okay, uh, other business, we have a discussion with, on HOP grant with, um, Jen Sis.
Yeah, she's from the Stafford Regional Planning Council. Um, I asked her to come tonight. Now, we, last time at our work session discussed the two grants. There are one was the Housing Navigator Grant, um, which is a planning board said not to pursue. And then we, there were some additional questions on the HOP grant, because the town will be, um, applying for it, and SRPC will be helping with the application process. And, um, we tried to update our master plan, um, chapter. I'm trying to get us back into swing of things, master plan chapter each year. We hadn't slated for which one we were gonna do, and I feel like this is a perfect opportunity, um, since we could get it fully funded. So, um, I'll turn it over to Jen. Um, she could probably just give you a brief overview again of like what the grant is, like we, I know you had seen it before, or answer any questions you may have. He also has a cost estimate for y'all, just to show like what she would be, or what SRPC would be including for their grant application, and it's a little bit larger too than just doing, just, I'm gonna say just, but, um, doing a master plan chapters, community outreach portion and that sort of thing.
So why don't, um, Vanessa said you may have seen all of this at some point.
I don't know if they've seen the cost estimate. I think that's the only thing.
This is a draft.
And it's a draft copy.
We'll talk about it. Um, and then I also printed a few copies, probably not enough for everyone, of just the general information on the HOP grants.
And this.
So my disclaimer is I don't work for New Hampshire Housing. I don't have anything formally to do with the HOP grants, but I've sat in on enough of the information sessions and, and have chatted with the staff, um, at New Hampshire Housing, quite a bit about, about the program, and so, and well-versed enough that I can probably answer most questions about the grant program. Um, and if I can't, I certainly know who to reach out to, um, to get more information for you. So just kind of a little bit of background, and first, who I am. I'm Jen Sis, I'm Director of the Stafford Regional Planning Commission. Uh, and anytime you have questions and you want some technical assistance like that, feel free to give us a holler and we, we will pop over and, and do what we can to assist you. It's something that we do for our dues paying communities. Uh, and so this is an example of that. Um, so Vanessa and I have been talking about that planned schedule for, um, updating different master plan chapters and kind of what makes sense to do next. And so one of the things uh, that she had mentioned was updating that demographics and housing chapter in your master plan. Um, I know it's not one of the oldest chapters, uh, but we do know that there's quite a bit that has changed since, like, what was it, 2016, 2017? Um, that it was updated. There's quite a bit that's changed. We also have a lot of new information and data that's been released since that chapter was updated. Um, we've got a, a lot of data from the census, uh, through 2020. We're also finally in 2023 going to get the, the complete set of, um, data from the decennial census. That's a hundred percent count data, the most accurate data that the Census Bureau has. We'll be getting that, uh, in early to mid 2023. So that's another whole round of updated information. That's our primary source of information for anything demographics, um, housing a, and the like. So that's another thing to kind of feed into that update of demographics and housing master plan chapter. So one of the things that we were looking at and talking about was the opportunity to use the HOP grant to fund that chapter, uh, update. Then kind of letting you save, uh, town dollars for other sections of the master plan or other initiatives that you might, might have. Um, and the other nice thing about it is it is a fair, it's fairly robustly funded for doing a master plan update. Particularly if you're only looking at one section of the master plan. So it allows you to do, um, a more comprehensive update process with a little bit more emphasis on, um, the outreach and engagement component. So, uh, that's about what that, that draft provides. It's just kind of a look at, okay, what's that approach that we might take? And, and trying to structure an approach a bit within the grant allowance. Um, just kind of going back to those HOP grants. They do have three different categories of grant funding. One is that the planning and data assessment section. That's the one that you would be applying for if you decided to ask for master plan funding. Uh, the maximum award amount, uh, under that is 25,000, and the grant deadline is January, uh, Janu- January 27th. So that's coming up. Fairly soon, faster than you can imagine that it, that it will. Um, they do have two other subsequent rounds of funding that you can apply for. You don't have to apply in any order. You don't have to do a phase one before you do a phase three. But that first, for the first phase there is that planning assessment. The second phase is regulatory audits. So it gives you, that one would allow you to have up to $50,000 in funding to literally take your regulations, your zoning, your subdivision, your site plan, and from beginning to end, kind of go through it and do, um, a review of how it may be impacting housing, um, growth or development in your community. And identify some opportunities for how to amend the ordinances. And then that third phase, um, is regulation development. So, you know, if you go through that audit, or if you already know of something that you want to do, you can do, apply for that third phase, um, and for up to a hundred thousand to go through those regulatory changes. So like, even if you went through the master plan update and you said, you know what, we really need to rewrite, uh, ordinance X, Y, or Z, then you could come in and just go straight from like that phase one grant to the phase three grant to get the funding to do those ordinance updates that you identified in the master plan process. So it's kind of a big picture there on the grants. Um, why don't I pause there? Cause I know I can go really fast and keep going. Um, any questions for me at that point? And then I can, you know, to there, and then I can kind of answer any, you know, what we, what we as SRPC might do to help you.
I have no question, actually, aside from her. Do we have someone that has already been set aside who's gonna be actually writing the application?
I will be, um, partnering with, um, if we do move forward with it, with SRPC to do that. And during our master plan, um, updates, we have traditionally used SRPC because we have a continuing services type contract. I don't know if that's what it's called, but, um, so I would be the one that would be making sure it's all correct and good to go. And any subsequent ones to follow up. So if we follow up with the other ones. That would be me. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's something here again, um, one of those points of clarification here on these grants is like, SRPC is not the applicant on the grant. The municipality is the applicant. So this would have to come from the town and be submitted by the town. We're here as a resource entity, so again, dues paying communities, um, were available to help out. What we've told communities, is that depending on, you know, if all 18 of our communities came in and simultaneously said, hey, we want to apply for one of these grants, will you write the application for us? We don't have the capacity to do that. But, so our way of prioritizing is one, you know, if, if we're gonna be that person that's working with you afterwards, we'll write a hundred percent of the. if, if we're gonna be that person that's working with you afterwards, we'll write a hundred percent of the application narrative for you if that's what you want. But we're not, still not gonna submit it. You're still responsible for.
Yeah, the town is just coming up.
Cause we're not eligible to do that. That would be via phone call.
They're just there as a consultant.
Yeah, we would act as a no cost consultant to help with the grant writing. Um, yes.
So you wouldn't get the fifteen thousand dollars or something.
Well, see, that's the thing. Well, we wouldn't get paid for the grant writing. We, so we would, uh, again, like I said, what I've told communities is those communities that want us to do the work, if you're funded, we'll do a hundred percent of the grant writing for you at no cost. Um, the communities that are like, well, we have to go out to bid. They don't want us to write the full application because that, that would be kind of a, that would create a conflict of interest for, for us and for them. Should we, should we try and, um, bid on it and compete for it as that consultant? So for those folks, we've said, you know, listen, as your regional planning agency, you choose. We are happy to answer questions for you. If you need, you have data requests, we'll send you that information. If you want to know some just basic things, we're again, happy to send that along, um, and assist in any way we can. But we can't, we can't write their applications if they're going out so bad.
And also as a side note, I've already talked to, um, the town administrator about it, um, and that, that's allowable within our.
Oh, good.
Processes.
Shot in the leg, do you? Was this what, this was, is it, did you request these items and prices on these items?
Um. No, it is their list because it's also a more robust than. So every year, you know, as, as you know, or may not know, um, the land use department works with the planning board to fund projects. So this past year, we funded our land use and transportation chapters. And that's sometimes a lot of things can get cut back a little bit just due to budget constraints. So I've asked, I asked, um, definitely we're looking at this, hey, if I was going to, to apply for this, what is the most like robust? Um, scope of work that you could give us that would address all these, help the town out and see more information? So if we don't get the grant for whatever reason, we would have, definitely have to scale back because that, uh, our budget for consulting work, um, this year I'm asking, I believe, fifteen thousand in the budget process this year. So this is also funding that would help us. Um, we have other things I know that the planning board wanted to look at that would help, um, pay for us to do this portion of it.
Vanessa, I know you have a timeline for how you address, um, each of the master plan updates. So normally where would the housing one fall? Was this something that needed to be done soon?
Um, so let me go back and look at the list. I started working actually with, with Jen on this. Um, so it wasn't necessarily like, um, the it's kind of the, might be more the oldest one. So the last one was upgrades of demographics and housing chapters in twenty sixteen. The one that we're currently doing is the oldest one is existing land use. Um, our vision chapter will be updated every time we do kind of revision to make sure that it's, um, up to date. Um, so it either would have been that one or the economic development, but the economic, I would say the oldest one looking at this, um, as a snapshot would be the demographics and housing.
Right. And a lot certainly has changed in Barrington since two thousand fifteen in terms of.
Yes.
It has, but it's interesting because when you.
Hasn't, hasn't, right?
It hasn't, it hasn't.
They have a lot of growth.
Cause when you look at it, the actual like, um, uh, what's the right word for it? Not, uh, cost per household, but the, um, salary per household or community per household dollars have gone up significantly in Barrington. Which if I, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, drives that affordable housing number higher as opposed to driving it down to a lower number for affordable housing.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I've got also mini update on is we're also internally at SRPC in the process of rewriting our regional housing needs assessment. Um, so it's like a lot of great data that'll be available at the end of this year, um, for our communities. And, you know, just today we were meeting and talking about, um, the draft. And we drew the analogy to, it's, it's been a bit of a roller coaster. Where we've seen, you know, where, you know, we came off of two thousand seven, you know, the original spike at like two thousand four, two thousand five. Um, and our market crashed, uh, at that point. I mean, we're all well aware. We never, we never really fully recovered, but then, you know, coming into the pandemic, prices like started to skyrocket, um, again. And that was a combination of, of just complete nutter shortage of supply, um, no building, uh, and, and various other things. And then we hit inflation on top of it. So now we're starting to see prices come down. And we're just not quite sure where we're gonna be even like six months from now. Um, so it's, it's kind of, we're at this, this weird inflection point, um, where we're just not quite sure how the market is gonna change. So it definitely, um, is putting us at an interesting, interesting place, um, with it. But you are right, like our, um, median incomes have definitely increased substantially. Um, and then through housing prices that have as well. But, you know, they're still not keeping pace. And the other piece is just the, the construction of housing isn't keeping pace with like the number of households. So as a result, we've got, you know, on the rental side, we have vacancy rates of less than one percent. On the ownership side, you know, vacancy rates, um, less than, less than two percent in that general area. Um, and it's just, it's not sustainable in the short term. And in that, in part is what kind of drove prices for, you know, further and further upward. So it's definitely.
The healthy rental market is five.
Five percent for, yes. Yeah. I mean, one percent or less than a one percent, I mean, that essentially is you've got someone lined up to move in as soon as the per, the previous tenant has moved out.
Read the death notices.
Yeah, it's, it's the one, you know, the one or two days between, you know, moving out and moving in, um, is what that equates to.
It's an old Seinfeld episode.
So, I, I, and I guess the one piece that I questioned out of this is we, we can do it, but what does it change? Cause I, from everything I'm reading, we're like a year out from where we're gonna see like the real impact of this economy. And like I was, and I'm always looking at housing, housing starts, the data on it.
Yeah.
Um, and even that, they're saying we won't feel the impact of this for another.
Already mortgage originations are down twenty percent.
Right.
Seventy percent interest.
And they're saying like the impact on building hasn't kicked in yet because it's still using all that, that cheap money that's still going through the pipeline.
Right.
We've just a hundred and fifty well units in the pipeline, which probably will start
Yeah.
Twenty-three, twenty-three or twenty-four, so.
So I'm like, I, I almost wonder, are we a little premature on this or are we? Because we're not gonna.
Yes, it is. I mean, if you think about it, I mean, timeline wise, you work on this, you put in an application. Um, you're not really gonna be starting until the new year and you're not gonna complete this in, you know, a couple of months. Um, so, you know, would spread over twenty twenty-three. So you would have some time to kind of see how the market's leveling off. I think the bigger question is that we already do have quite a bit of information and data. And it's looking at, at the, kind of the policy side of things. And whether our policies are yielding the results that we want to see in terms of the types of locations, uh, the types of housing and the locations for where housing is occurring. So that kind of ties back to, um, the way we put the scope together. And like I mentioned, we already have a lot of the data that'll be ready at the finger, at our fingertips. So there won't be a lot to do on the data updating as part of, um, the, the update itself. Because we'll have it right there, right in the, right in the poll. Um, but.
My, my question is, as John alluded to, with two hundred and eighty-five housing starts, that's gonna make a significant impact in what Barrington looks like.
Right.
A year from now, so.
So that's what, like, the biggest, the two biggest pieces that I put into the, the proposal, um, was one, that public forum. Um, because it is a good way to get your public input and engagement, but it just, it's public forums just by their nature and what it takes to, to, to organize it are expensive efforts. Um, the other piece is scenario planning. So, uh, you know, looking at and doing the GIS analysis, uh, of, okay, this is what we know we have, and this is what we know that our ordinance will allow. And if we assume a development rate of, you know, X units per year or, uh, growth of population of, you know, so many, so many people over time, you can constrain that. And you can do a visualization of, um, of what that development might look like under your current policies. Policies being your, your zoning, your subdivision, your site plan regulations. And then you can say, okay, well, we want to test the policy changes. What would it, what would it look like or what would it yield if we were to change, um, those, those policies? And how would that, how, what would the results be for our community? And is that giving us what our future land use vision is? And so that's one of the things that you'll have coming into this process is that future land use vision. So it'd be that opportunity to play with it and test it and see, see if, you know, certain policy recommendations can possibly yield what you want.
So, did I remember from reading the site, there's like five million bucks available?
Yes.
And that will be gone if you don't apply for it.
Yes.
So the advantage of applying for it is to get the grant.
Yeah, they are, they are working really hard to get the.
The cities to take, to take a test of it. Manchester, Nashville, Manchester, Concord. Not so much Concord.
Still to be determined. Uh, you know what? They did just release, I think at the end, middle or end of last week where the capital investment dollars were going. And I was away most of last week, so I haven't had a chance to look at that, see, see where those dollars are going.
So I could, just like the grant. There's a new American Community Survey coming out. It's supposed to be updating that too.
I don't know. Good question.
She could point out this advocate. You know, you, you say, should we wait? A year from now, we're in a recession and these two hundred and fifty-four starts don't start because now we're in a recession. Do we then wait for those two hundred and fifty-four to start again and be out of the recession? So how long do we wait?
Yeah, it's, a- and, and I guess that's the real question. Do you see? Like, we've got the forty units that are currently in process that theoretically should be done.
Starting in next week.
Okay. I was gonna say, first of the year, they'll be occupied. And then we've got sixty-five here behind us.
Fifty-eight thousand.
I think originally.
And eight hundred five. Office building.
Yep. And then you've got the eighty-five that are on nine, shortly down nine on the right, but they haven't gotten all their approvals.
You've got Christmas dove.
Yep.
Ten condos and twenty-five.
Town homes. Yeah.
Drives and drabs, yeah.
Right.
But this would just be good money to update that chapter.
Yeah, cause it's not, I mean, it's not utilizing town funds that we can use for other consulting work that I know that we've been talking about. So for us, we have to update it anyways at some point. It's our next.
There's a lot of, yeah, one every, how to be updated, you know, new, new information.
Yeah. And I know when we talked before, Jen was like, oh, the next year or two, before we had, knew about this granting opportunity, they were gonna get a lot of good resources and data because they haven't been updated in so long. So I think, I feel like this is a good opportunity to address that chapter as well, especially since we can.
Yeah, I've said before, the only thing, problem for us is that our policies that are supposedly generating the most affordable housing, highest density housing are the least popular with residents. You know, every time we put one of these things in, the feedback, feedback, feedback is negative.
Well, we are, we already changed the zoning because of that, because of what we ended up, what we're gonna end up with, and it doesn't.
You know, they get to go into building, twenty that are built almost to, to pack rashes and everything, then some low income housing.
No.
And they're gonna be rentals as I understand.
Yeah, our, I agree, Steve, twenty-five things, very well, so I'm not generally a rent poser. The nine.
Yeah. And I think that's one of the kind of benefits of, of going through a scenario planning exercise is like, it helps to visualize what the impacts to the community are, what it could look like on the landscape.
So once we mentioned the best low income housing you could possibly build is trailer parks.
Okay.
And we have, I mean, they do, you know, you get it for a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, manufactured housing parks. I mean, the manufactured housing of today is not the manufactured housing, um, of the seventies and eighties. It's totally different. You throw it on a cooperative land, formal land ownership.
Yeah, the other, the other prob, but the, the problem with trailer parks or like mobile home parks is they often don't end up being affordable because the lot rent rains the equity out of it. And whatever a person buys.
Yeah.
And puts in there, the problem is if they need to move it, they can't afford to move it.
No.
Either based on their income. So they get to close. Right. The cooperative is the only way that it becomes a community.
Yes.
Park. And even there, it's still not over, I wouldn't call it affordable because their lot rents are four hundred plus dollars a month. I've only, I only know of one park that I've seen or heard of that's under four hundred dollars a month. And I think it was like three forty or three eighty. Just because I, I have staff and folks who live in these parks. And when they're paying five hundred dollars a month, I'm like, you spend six grand a year to have a lot.
Tax on the building.
Right. They got property tax on a building. I'm like, there's nothing affordable about that.
There's no, nothing affordable. Yeah, but the other path is Bob said, you know, our, our, our policies are supposed to generate affordable housing. They're generating housing that nobody likes and they're not affordable.
Right.
They're very expensive.
Well, when I was here in two thousand fourteen, when this all started, because they, one of the vision centers was done in the B-two turbo can building. And I sat there and went through this and that, when we talked about the density, they're like, oh, it'll never happen. It'll never get there anyway. So if we're talking about visioning and planning, you say it'll never happen. And then all of a sudden, somebody comes in and puts in this application for this obscene density.
Yeah.
As Bob said, is not affordable and ugly.
Right.
And unfortunately, the construction costs today, that's really what's driving.
Right.
And if you're, I'm gonna put in town houses, I can't make them affordable because the cost of putting the road in and road requirements and everything else.
Yeah, the, the lot build out.
Right.
You, you know, you got a million dollars in a lot build out. You gotta have fifty houses to make it affordable.
And you gotta be getting probably twenty-three hundred a month to pay for it.
Yeah.
Well, New Hampshire gets like fifty-two thousand migrants every year coming in. It's five of the counties with negative growth now, natural growth, more deaths than births. But then this, this application, this grant is not gonna bring housing to Barrington. It's just gonna assist in the planning.
Right, the planning.
Right.
So it just sounds like the conversation's really digressive. Do we want, do we want to have go, whether to go motion?
Sure.
What is, what are we gonna?
Or if you recommend going for it or not, because I know the last time we had met, there was additional questions that you guys wanted to talk about and stuff. And I feel like Jen's probably.
It's like what she's on, Jen and Tabor, but do you want everything on the list or who's gonna pick the list?
I was going with the list, but if you guys want to pick and choose, I'm fine with that too. I, I asked her, I asked her for everything. Yeah.
There's something different that you would like to focus on, let me know, um, because we can always, um, shift and adjust.
I'm happy not to micromanage it.
Yeah, if that same reason is to get five, twenty-five thousand dollars, we guarantee to get twenty-five thousand.
Yes. Pretty much. I mean, I, I shouldn't say that because I'm not speaking for them, but I, I think at this point, they
I like.
They want to fund applications. They're, what they have said is if you have any questions, reach out to us because we want to help you and we want to help your application get to yes. Um, so that's, that's the approach.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. I will say though, that they are really hoping, and this is kind of to your point, they're really hoping that to see more than just master plan grants. Um, and for that reason, like they have an early deadline for applying for master plans because they want folks that do so to come back and apply for grants to do regulatory changes. Um, so I think the way they have it stacked up is that if, if you came in now and did a master plan grant application, you would still have time to come back, um, for a grant to amend regulations, um, to get, like to get to your point. Because a plan isn't going to change, um, the housing landscape. Changing regulations and or coming up with other incentives, that is what will do, will at least help. Um, so for those, the deadline is November fifteenth. So you come back November, you know, before November fifteenth of next year and you have time to, to put in additional funding requests to do regulatory changes. Um, and the funds have to be fully expended by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Um, so it gives you time to do subsequent actions.
So, yeah.
I'm just curious, are there things? Are there things in the pipeline? Because like, you know, if you folks remember a few years ago, like pushed from the governor's office, they ended up amending land use regulation where it, where there, it was a right of use to have a, an accessory dwelling.
Right.
On your property. If it was, and then all those towns, we, we were all jockeying to figure out, how do you write that language into your, your zoning so that? Write that language into your, your zoning so that it's a primary use and things like that, so. Is there stuff like, is there more coming, because when we talk about regulatory changing, change. Is there stuff already kinda teed up that's gonna drive this, cuz it's a, it's a statewide problem, it's not just a local problem?
No, you're right, um, nothing, um, nothing is kinda teed up right now that would have like an impact like the, the statewide ADU. Um, uh, statutory change. There, let's see, um, there were a few things that passed in this, in this most recent legislative, um, session. Uh, the one thing that you should look at is, I don't know, does Barrington have, uh, like a housing for older persons? Or ordinance or incentives for like fifty-five plus, sixty plus, you know, senior housing? Okay, um, cuz yeah, the one of the changes that they made this past session was communities that offered, um, incentives. To age restricted, age restricted housing, um, those, um. Incentives would automatically be applied to anyone who came in for like affordable or workforce housing. Um, uh, effect, and that would go into effect in June of twenty twenty-three. So it gave communities, um, this winter in town meeting, um, to make changes, should you want to make changes. So it was a big one that went in this past year.
What does that mean?
What does that mean?
Yeah.
Nothing for you.
Once you have it, you have to also use those regulations to allow workforce.
Correct, so if you were to say, we'll give you, I'm just. Be hyperbolic for the sake of an example, um, if you were to say to someone who is developing age restricted or senior housing. That, oh, because you're doing this, we're gonna give you a twenty percent density bonus.
Or we'll allow seven hundred square foot, you, you.
Yes, yeah.
As a for a single person.
Then if someone were come next June to come in and say, well, I'm gonna do affordable housing. Um, there, then you would have to also honor giving them that same twenty percent bonus. Density bonus or reduced, um. Dimensional requirements that you would give to someone who is developing age restricted housing. Um, so that's something that, that is, um, that has been enacted and is in statute now.
But we don't, we don't have that, so I haven't brought it to the board, so.
But to understand how it is.
Right, right.
So we want a motion on this too?
Well, the, one thing here, I mean, I guess the program back on gives me pause. Uh, you know, it's the purpose is to provide resources to undertake reforms. That, you know, buy affordable house for all income levels, including start houses, apartments, get jobs, places to retire, that kinda stuff. That goal is contrary to the feedback we've been getting from residents. So all the housing we go in that supports that goal has been negatively received by the residents of the town. We last put in some regulations to decrease density because of the feedback we're getting. So the problem I have is the goal of the program is a hundred eighty degrees away from what the feedback we're getting from residents of our town. So if that's the focus, you know, I have a concern, and even on affordable house development. With the second oldest state, oldest state in the union, we currently don't have a problem, you know, attracting older people. So, you know, I mean, mains the oldest and we'll second oldest, so this area does not have a problem attracting people who are, you know, retirement age.
Good retirement incentives.
Yes, so I think you, we're looking for the help, but that goal is contrary to the feedback we've been receiving from our residents. Um, they don't like the housing that supports those goals.
So where were you pulling that sentence?
Under program back.
Last sentence.
Last sentence of the first paragraph?
Yeah. Well, the first sentence is, if, uh, uh, if the vibe best various houses development.
Yep.
And then it goes on to say the type of, you know, housing they would support. And it's, you know, affordable house for all incomes, start house, apartment, get jobs, you know, places to retire, that kinda stuff.
I would encourage you to actually reread that sentence, cuz what they're saying is that local master plans often. Have these goals. And that, um, the zoning ordinance conflicts with those goals, but that's what they're saying in that sentence.
And I'm saying that changes to our regulations to support those goals have not been well received by our residents.
Those aren't New Hampshire housing schools, they're just using those as illustrations of what municipalities often have as goals in their master plan. I would say their, their sole goal in this program, um, is the, in the introduction, is to increase housing supply. What they're simply saying and recognizing, and I think this is also what's coming from the governor's office, is that we have a housing shortage in New Hampshire. Um, and so this program has been put out there as a way to increase housing supply. Obviously. They, you know, they're New Hampshire housing, they look at, they're looking for funding that, that. Is afford, they're looking for housing that is affordable to a diversity of people, so yes, they're definitely gonna be looking, you know, that. That we're not creating barriers to, um, the workforce housing statute, um, so, you know, that is real, um. A real consideration.
But as we said, we've got all those houses in the pipeline, it's two people per unit, it's five, five hundred people to our population. It's quite a lot, ninety-four hundred people.
Just don't want to hit you. There you go. Didn't mean to booby trap you here.
So we get a grant to do this, and the idea is to help with planning. So we have only forty percent of Barrington is, uh, developable, developable anyways. So we use the, the grant to help their planning, so we go opposite of what this is, and we do not. Put, uh, whatever's available for land into. Section eight housing or low income housing or what.
They're not, they're not saying that you need to do subsidized housing. There's a lot of things, a lot of different factors that go into that.
Can we take the information that we, we get from this and use it for the residents? Instead of saying that, you know, this goes against what we're trying to do. If, if, if it's free, twenty-five thousand dollars of free money, it's gonna help with planning, mapping, social media, whatever that is. And it goes to help support the residents?
Yeah, I, I have a problem that, I think what I'm saying, buddy, is that. You know, if the recommendation is a whole bunch of recommendations to increase affordable housing, they will never implement because the residents don't want it. Then that, if that's the goal, then I think we're kinda pushing ourselves in the wrong direction. I think updating our database, there's a lot of things in here I like, but if the specific goal is to, you know, generate regulations that are, you know. Residents clearly indicate they don't like, then that's kind of, you know.
And it's not, that's step two. So in this part, step one, public forum to identify preferences and opportunities. So if people say the preference is three acre lot, single family home. Then when it comes to regulations, that's what we're gonna go towards.
Well, it, last time we changed regulations, we went the other way, other way.
Right.
Lower density, so I think, you know, the direction that we're aiming is, is that way, not, you know, greater density, more square housing, so. I'm just concerned that if this has got a, you know, primary direction to one direction that is the opposite of what we're, our residents, if they want. For the time of Barrington, the rural characteristics, their vision, then, you know, there's a little bit of disconnect, I think, between. You know, the primary goal and what.
Well, we'll talk about that when we get into the zoning regulations as well, because that's where, that's where that'll really play out. Which you might not wanna stay here and listen to that, cuz that'll be contrary to all of us.
Well, I, I'm not saying that, you know, this is not a good thing, there's a lot of good information that the data generates on it. I just don't want the focus to be generated regulation.
And you're afraid we're gonna be using that.
No, I, I just don't, I just don't want the focus to be there, that, let's focus on stuff that we, we know, update the data, you know, that kind of stuff. Stuff that supports business data, there's a lot of things in here that are good. I just worry about the primary goal being, you know, things that are contrary to the affordable. That's, it's not the, what we've been hearing from residents, don't, don't, don't go there, we don't want that, that's the message, so. But I'm, I'm not against the, the grant, that's what's coming across, that's not my intent.
Make motion?
Make a motion that we like the grant that's described in. H O P sheet that we, you know, I mean, there's no. Back it up, just lie. That's your, Alan.
Joyce?
Happy L O I.
Napa. Are you done yet? So things that, like, off topic, but catch my interest are like, when you look at second home rate, like, has continuously climbed across the state of New Hampshire. Primarily more in the North Country than around here, but you also look at cash sales. Have gone, like, started it, like, um, there were, what, two thousand transactions in twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen? Then it jumped to like three thousand and change, almost up to the point of almost four thousand cash transactions. For home sales in New Hampshire, which is. High, yeah, you look at the affordability index on that, and it's big.
Yeah, um. Yeah, the other kinda trying to look at though, that's, that related, that's really interesting, is the demand for conversion of seasonal homes to year round homes. And I know that's something that we're seeing, at least in our region. Quite a lot, yeah, um, and the implications that that then has in turn on your, like, plastics and private roads. That just really don't have the capacity to handle that year. Particularly the lake.
Well, that's, when I moved here.
Yeah, so many things there, and so the question is, is like, is that the appropriate place for that, or do we need to be looking at ways to?
So I live on a lake, and I can tell you when I moved here, if there were three lights on around the lake, it was a big deal, like, you were like, oh, wow, oh, there's somebody in. And now it's like lights all the way around the lake.
And the other problem with the convergence too is.
This was one of the.
If you're gonna season out, um, Barrington, that's a word, you know, pay taxes, no kids in school. Once they convert, they would get, there's potential for kids in school, they take, you know. Now, they want lawn now, so then you have the impacts of like, you know, the runoff, so it's, it's, it's all bad, at least houses get converted for the year round. For the town.
You know how to avoid kids? Multi-family. I'm not kidding.
Avoid?
Don't want kids, you know, how multi, you, you're incented by family, I know, saying avoid kids is terrible, I'm kidding. But.
It's like, where's?
When it comes to residential development and the impacts on schools, single family development has the greatest impact on schools. Um, multifamily has the least impact.
We'll see what.
Yeah, yeah.
I already tell you that I go four kids moving in across from the middle school in one week.
Just in terms of household sizes by, by unit type, so.
I, I mean, I could see that if you, if you restrict the size of the development, so if you do a multi-unit that's a two bedroom, nothing larger. That's your threshold, once you start getting three, four.
It's three and four unit, three and four bedrooms, yeah, when you then measure.
Yeah, then it's a different.
Kids, number of kids correlates. Stronger to number of bedrooms.
Like, if you're gonna look at doing that, you look at a multi-unit, like, I forget the place that's in Dover, it's down close to, I can't. I forget all the street names. No, the ones that run up the backside by the mills that parallels like Court Street or Church Street and all of that, and, um. There's a, they're little, they're all one bedroom units. And there's like fifty of them, and they got a pool, or sixty of them, and they got a pool, but they're all one bedroom. So it's like singles and couples only. Interesting.
Right, well, Vanessa and I will chat.
I'm one of those, like, second homeowners. Not impacting the school, but helps drive the way, way down.
The house is fifty-four greater costing community, see how much.
Thank you.
They sell for nine hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand in cash, they can buy three.
Right.
One of these for seven hundred thousand.
Right, and they pocket a couple hundred.
Last year, uh, a customer, like, oh, one with the local, and all the rest, all the rest are coming from.
Yeah, out of state.
Yeah.
Hey, can I ask you a quick question, and then I'll leave you alone, what's the average house here in Barrington?
Four hu- the average cost?
Yeah.
Uh, four, uh, there's like four hundred, I was gonna say, I think it's four sixty-three or something.
A hundred grand less?
Hmm, it wasn't quite that, it was in the high threes, I believe. Yeah, three eighty something.
You're almost catching up to Massachusetts.
It, looking at the.
Four to five hundred dollars a square foot.
More desirable, house on this place like yourself at one point three million.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's a real estate person.
Yes, yeah, oh, everybody, I got a note, I got a card. Lovely picture.
Real estate business.
It, it has been.
All right, okay. We go to zoning?
Is, there's a. Interesting. Uh, draft zoning warrant articles.
So I'm just bringing this back to you, um. If there was, the ones that we discussed last time, we, I added one in from, um, a new request from town staff, it was a discussion with. Um, John, our regulations about, um. Definition from attached building, yeah, instead of walls.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's funny, cuz the people are challenging it, so, yeah, the bottom one on the second page. Um, and then I. I don't know, I'll tell John, I'll say. And, um, the reason also, not just because he's been, not necessarily challenged by it, but, um, this also in other communities use that same definition. So it's kind of more to make sure that we're. So, that's really the only thing, um, I know that, um, Bronya had mentioned. The language of the. The second one?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I believe I changed that, so if there's any other comments or questions or additions or. Yeah.
More explanation, because I get this thing I pulled down the times.
Okay.
Every article, but he uses a note on it, an explanation, what would it do if you voted yes, and what would it do if you voted no? Then explain this to the voters, cuz I think a lot of times.
They don't.
Yeah, cuz I was confused, to be honest, like, when I first started, when, cuz we were.
Yeah.
The first round, or, I'm sorry, right before these went out, or not these ones, but the ones that passed and this year. And, um, there was a lot of confusion, so that's a, thank you for that suggestion for that.
Was a particular effort to defeat them to.
Yeah, so I don't know, what year did you say that was, maybe, where'd you find that? Yeah, I'm like hidden resources.
Twenty-two years later.
I started purging all that.
May I, I was like, maybe I could borrow it to.
And I've got four.
Do you mind if I borrow this, and I'll get it back to the next meeting, okay? So I think that would help for sure for, like you said.
Yeah. Particularly wording that has to be vax.
Right.
With a stem, just an explainer below. We're not trying to change a lot, it's just a simple thing.
Yeah.
I got.
And attorney hasn't reviewed these yet, but.
Four that I wanted to talk about.
Yes.
Oh, well, just for discussion purposes.
These newer ones that we have been defeated in the past.
Okay. Um. Eight point five, uh, N S C one. Is on the highway open. Requires fifty foot buffer. I require a fifty foot buffer on the.
Where are you at, once again?
The green belt buffer?
Yeah, yup, that has been. Generally, the feedback I've been getting is that is a big negative from. You know, people, they don't wanna have. Read in front of their building, they wanna have their sign out, they wanna have, you know, that's been a negative. From a lot of people that are looking at one twenty-five. You don't think that the building's a theater thing with that nice front looking down, you mean, and trees. Add to the character of the town rather than looking like Rochester or Dover, you gotta park it right up to the street.
The one everybody uses is we don't want to look like plastow. You don't want everything crammed right there on the highway, on the main road here.
Is that, I saw Eric's support for it.
No. That's because I haven't spoken yet.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just sharing what the feedback is.
Voice here, I just think it looks good for our community and to stand some.
I, I won't say that that doesn't look nice, but he had the property to do that at the time. And now when you get ones like the, the sports center at the corner. I think that fits without any green belt and like, I don't know, I, I.
Yeah, well, let, and we've been free to. Liberty truck is kind of grandfathered, they have those trucks right out in front, you know.
I don't need those things.
No, not at all.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is. How do we want to, how, this, that's where it's open for interpretation. I wouldn't, because if you look at the setbacks, like the state has a right of way that's what 50 feet off the center line? So.
Yeah, you can't, yeah.
So you're, you're already gonna be.
In the highway. It's a seventy-five foot setback. It doesn't say it has to be green for seventy.
No, no.
It's just the building can't be there.
Right.
If you look at from.
But you don't want a parking lot either.
Down 125 all the way through Barrington, how many properties, commercial properties there that actually maintain a green bill that's green bill? It doesn't have something parked on it. I think in Barrington, you won't be what, I agree with, but nobody, you think about 125. You know, Barrington be the same as everybody else, Rochester, Lee, it's not that big of a deal. You know, so I think us requiring the fifty-foot, you know, rebuild buffer.
Well, which would be done if.
In town, within Barrington, if you go from, like you say, one end to the middle of town. And of course, gonna pat myself on the back because I maintain a nice green lawn in front of my building, but. Everyone else there's, uh, whatever's parked out front, whatever, whatever their business is, if you use car lot, they have used cars or grass. If it's a, uh, place that sells trailers, there's trails all the way across. So the, um. The letter of the law is being agreed to, but the spirit of it is being, is not being agreed to. So some of, some of grandfather, right down the road from the Washington Sports in the boat place. You know. They haven't got a rebuild that I, that I, that I perceive as a rebuild.
Well, I guess that's the question.
They do have grass out front. Yeah.
And I think that's what I would look at is, do you constitute like a lawn, some vegetation in there? What like what's, what's an acceptable green belt?
Without having read it right now, isn't the green belt the, the trees that it's supposed to be undisturbed?
The, the way they define it is the green belt may be left in its natural state if sufficiently vegetated or planted to provide a visually attractive vegetated area.
No, no development stores parking or pavement will be permitted except the green belt may be arrested. In naturally sufficient, sufficiently vegetated on our plan.
So I'll tell you, I'm a little angry towards that policy because I tried to have trees taken down in front of my office. The guy refused because of the green belt policy. And two months later, a tree fell on my boat and destroyed. And that's no joke. And it was one of the pines I wanted down, so I'm bitter towards that.
Well, but we could, not mineral make change that. Not trees, but bushes.
Well, but it says leaving.
No, 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 it says it may be, it doesn't say it has to be, it says it may be left.
It doesn't have to be trees and things either. What we did, we did two-way tactical, we didn't demand that they put trees in or anything in buffer, right? Would require. Quite a landscaping plan.
Right, but it was. Trees, but on the parking area and everything, yeah, we did require, yeah. Because I remember on one side, the smoke was too much, so you gave them away for that, I believe.
Well, I wanted, 125, it went out, lines of sight, they're pretty good.
Yeah, right. So that's why, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, you want something that's backing somewhat clear.
Well, like you say, with the movie theater, we just did that one with, um, the guy that stores his equipment there right in the corner of, um, Green Hill Road, 25. And that was very similar, there's a established tree line right there. Can you see through this time of year? Maybe. Maybe. But for the most part, you don't see things parked back.
Oh, that's George stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's just, we don't wanna see storage. If you have a store or you have a business, you know, you wanna be seen. So you don't wanna have, to take down, let's say it's trees now, you know, you know, to take down the trees and you gotta landscape it and stuff like that. So the, the low cost approach is to leave the trees there and you can't see the zone. Right, so. I don't, I mean, if this is. Down all the trees and maintain a lot, it's doing the same thing, it's having the same thing.
That's an acceptable green belt. Well, the point you bring enough of them parking everything on there, that kind of defeats the whole purpose of the thing. There is a seventy-five foot setback, regional commercial in 150 in the town.
Well, like I say, where Rochester doesn't have it and Lee doesn't have it, we have it, I think it's just kind of.
People go, hey, this is nice, must be there.
Well, that's, that's come from the next one, I was, I want, I want a big page, I want on page, I want 125, so.
What is your paving requirement? Everybody said, no, no, we wanna have dirt. You know, or, or if we put a C V S in, they'll have a dirt parking lot, that's crucially fine.
Rural character.
I mean, I, I think realistically, when you go with that and your point that we don't want into plastow.
Right.
We don't have city water, we don't have city sewer, so we're not gonna have C V S necessarily coming in.
There may come a point where we do end up having municipal water. Maybe not municipal sewer, but municipal water is much more likely.
Municipal tax rate is three times ours. Because they have to support all of these things, the services.
Right, but what you may end up seeing, and I know it's, it's been talked about, is when you talk about the village district. And the downtown center is that to build out some of what they're doing down there, it would require like a shared infrastructure with community water.
Right. As long as it's readily funded, but to set up a public water and sewer condition.
But, but that's the thing you have to be careful of, this is like sidewalks, it starts with like, oh, we're just gonna do it because we wanna be the first. And next thing you know, five years later, the town of Barrington suddenly buying a sidewalk machine and we're maintaining sidewalks. Honestly.
You need to maintain it.
What's that?
You put in one foot of sidewalk.
Yeah. And, and that's like, and it's, and this is like, people are seeking these approvals where suddenly it's like, you're handing it over to the town to. To not be responsible for it. And municipal water.
Down all the way to the middle school, that's in the ten-year building plan.
Well, it's what they.
It's a state highway, so they would have to maintain it. And you know, where the state maintains.
Yeah, I was like, how, how many know how that's gonna work? Yeah.
So.
It, so. But when you start looking at that, that's what comes of it, is ultimately it ends up, it, it ultimately shifts to being a town responsibility and you've. You've got to be very careful that you don't open Pandora's box on that and suddenly now we're, we're doing it. It's much like when I was sitting on the select board, department growth, like making sure you don't grow your departments. At a rate that like drives the tax rate off the charts. And everybody wants everything, but everybody forgets it's gotta be paid for somehow.
Hey, Ron, what's your next one? Um, I'm gonna, the next one is paid, but I'm gonna take that last because that's on the other, that's on the zoning section, that's in the site. So sticking with the, um, zoning section. Three point one point eight parentheses three. Is.
Sorry, what was that? Eight point?
No, three point one point eight, three.
Signs.
Signs, yeah.
Oh, God.
Basically, it says we can.
Signs of abandoned property, that one?
Well, it's two and three really.
Two and three.
Removal of signs, it's like we can remove signs. And then the three says it's abandoned property. And which I have no problem with, but the problem with that is, um, under RSA, political signs have to be made, have to be. Helped by the town until one week after the election. So that is in conflict with the, the state regulations.
They only add except for political.
Yeah, it's what they said, the political signs which have to be held for one week after the election, before being disposed of. So just add that one phrase to it, so it might, it matches up with state operas.
But this political signs don't match up with the regulations for the town, I mean, there's, there's signs that are almost in the, in the, in the. Graphic.
Right.
And those are against the ordinance, the town ordinances, so they can be taken down. So, but if they're taken down.
Who's touching that third rail?
Wonder, wonder who would be stupid enough.
I've heard enough of that on, I'll take it, I'll do it.
I heard it's already done. But in, in any case, though.
So just to back up, so you're asking for the three point one point eight, two and three to match up to state?
Yeah. Or says they will be disposed of as abandoned property, just to add, with the exception of political signs which should be held for one week after the election before it be disposed of.
Okay.
And that, that'll be, that'll be complied with the RSA's.
So we pay for disposing of signs as it is not? At the town?
We need.
No, we, you're, people are responsible for picking up their own signs.
I think actually if you look it up, maybe it's changed, but abandoned property is supposed to be held for 60 days. Such much of the P D, I was in charge of property evidence, I don't know, any property that's turned in is abandoned or lost property. It has to hold for 60 days, so by this definition, calling it abandoned technically. Because if it's a, uh, Joe Smith sign, Joe Smith has to collect his sign. Up as abandoned property.
I, I'll leave it as Mike's, and you probably should investigate what. Does he have a thing? Maybe it needs to be modified further.
Include like what abandonment means or timeline, I mean.
With abandoned property has to be held some period of time, I don't know about that.
What we try and do, we try and take, get the signs off the road, we try to just make sure that the signs are available for wherever a home is connected.
Keeping up, making sure that we're covering our.
He's making sure we're matching up with our city, yeah, that's all I'm doing. So. The, speaking of, speaking of signs and political signs. Uh, twenty point eight. Point four. It's political signs.
Sorry, say it again.
Twenty point eight point four. Just banned, it's true. No, there's. Forty eight point four. Says that signs.
For the exception?
Yeah. Since. Um, political sign, you don't, you need to commit to put a sign up. One of the exceptions is a political sign which can be posted 30 days prior to an election document. So my question is, and hopefully Joyce is still on. I mean, I don't like all these signs up and, you know. I don't think they should be up forever, but it seems to me 30 days is pretty short, seems to me a sign is, well, seems to me that 30 days is too short. Um, it seems to me, I, I see signs posted, I think at least two weeks, two months before the election.
How about six?
Six months is not, I think that, if they're gonna go through the winter, that's, I would say that's a no-no. But.
Well, it's only starting the election, that's why I really don't think that.
Yeah, well, I, I'm thinking that 30 days is not enough.
I would agree, 60 days seems like a more reasonable time.
Yeah, I agree with that.
What, but isn't there a state statute on that as well?
Yeah, I didn't see it, I didn't really, I didn't see it.
I.
Orange has touched on that the other day.
Yeah.
I know that, um, uh, I, I don't, I don't wanna say Don Bullock's name and, and call him out, but he's been the first signs that have appeared in town. Those were months, months ago.
Well, the ones that I think. Was like, that's in March.
Right.
And so he's, he's been out, you know, eight months ahead of the thing. And they're gonna go through the winter, they're gonna be trash in the springtime by the time the election happens, so those to me are egregious examples.
Should have to remove before snow time, otherwise it's just gonna be.
Well, March is, March is voting season.
But, you know, thirty, he clears in five or 30 days, he wouldn't come out in 60 days either, I, I think the choice number of 60 days makes more sense to me. Thirty days doesn't seem, but not time to sign it out, no, it's, so I would say, I would suggest that we change to 60 days.
And what would be the justification, really, like, uh, just for, I'm trying to think like, because we put the little like.
To allow adequate time, I guess, for, uh. Candidate exposure.
Okay.
Exposure recognition.
Because those signs aren't bent to be long-term.
No.
Yeah.
Enough weather, they, they come apart.
And then to publicize it.
Studies out that approve that they don't make any significant difference.
I'm sorry, Joyce, I didn't hear that.
Um, I got distracted there with your comment, Bob, I, but I, I agree, they're probably not that effective, but since everybody does it. It becomes a thing if you don't do it. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's just not, whatever the planning board decides, it's not well-publicized among the residents of town. So we'll have to just make an effort to do that.
And then my last suggestion is. Under site review regulations is four point nine point eleven parentheses one. And that's the exactly allows not to pave in the highway. Not to pave SW, SW 20 or something like that in some language. And I, I would leave that alone, except I would say, except on the highway overlay zone on 125, so I wouldn't allow the. I wouldn't allow you to throw something in unpaid.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, Fagin, the section?
It's in the, uh.
In the site time review, four point.
Four point nine point eleven. That's the exclude.
A demarcation?
Site review? What section is it?
H forty-three? Am I the right thing?
Four point nine eleven says demarcation.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Four point nine point eleven, this one, four point nine point eleven.
Printers three.
You said three, I said one.
Oh, I apologize, I thought you said three. So you're proposing this regulation change to come back to vote so we can change this regulation?
Yeah.
Okay. I said, no, if you wanted to wait till the, like a bigger one or, okay, that's nice.
Putting in the ones we're putting, putting in now.
Well, they're kind of like two separate, like the zoning and then the site regulation.
Well, basically that paragraph allows you to, you want to pay. So you'll start with certain, with certain conditions. And I would say, add at the end of it, except in the highway over zone, highway overlay zone, I wouldn't allow it in the highway. So everywhere else in town, if you meet those exemptions, you can have unpaid, but in the highway overlap, uh, overlap zone. I would, I think 125 is, it's gonna put a green belt buffer, should have, we should just have our parking lot paid. You know, I think it's the better inch for the town, and I think having unpaid buildings on 125, for example. And highway, that includes Route nine, I'm okay just doing 125, I mean, I don't think we need.
So it'd be the regional commercial, Route 125, Route four, regional commercial, okay. Yeah, regional commercial. And did you want it in the town center? Like nights and the new town parking lot? Get the taxpayers to do that?
Um, that's something, I, I watched that fight as well, they could. One, one twenty-five is my main thing, you know.
Except in the highway overlay zone, which would.
Well, that includes nine. Well, I. He wants to do just 125.
Oh, just.
I would say in the highway, we're going on Route 125, I would, I would say 125, so.
And I'll just express my opinion, I'm against it. I absolutely would not vote for that. But it just matters, we're putting it as a warrant article, I'll be the one voting.
The regulation change is not a warrant article, that's the board just.
So, yeah, but that would develop on.
Business, the fifth car wins, you got the monument.
I, yeah, but I, I even think like the one we just approved, the hard rock welding or whatever it was.
The rock iron.
I don't think you need to pay, I don't think you, you need to make a small businessman like that.
Yeah.
Shell out 30 or 40 thousand and pave a parking lot that has no cust.
Shell out thirty or forty thousand and pave a parking lot that has no customers. And very few employees going in every day.
And I hate on that, but my response to that would be, then don't, don't locate a one twenty five. You know, locate locate a nine somewhere else in town. If you got no employees, no traffic, don't be on one twenty five, that's our prime, our prime real estate.
It's your prime real estate, but that was a real small lot with very little possibility of other opportunities. So what are you gonna get? So now you force them out of Barrington.
Right.
And now we've just lost more commercial tax base.
Yeah, those were wet, wet, wet blocks.
Yeah.
You got those with fifty. You know, at the end of the day, if we had to say.
Your goal that was gonna be a profit.
Still a way, still potential for a way.
Yeah, you can always ask for a way. Because anything you put through is only gonna be effective on, say, ninety nine, five percent of what's going on, it's always gonna be that except for a little bit, people are gonna have to get a minute.
Yeah, if this guy comes in with a strong case and says, you know, I don't, I won't do this thing, it could sit. But I think that, to me, one twenty five is our front door, it's, I is, we're all the traffic that goes through Barrington. Ninety ninety five percent of the traffic in Barrington is on one twenty five, the people don't live here. I think it's our front door, and I think it should, I think to our best of the businesses be presentable as possible. I think they, I think that means when they're unpaid, I think it's terrible.
Is the traffic volume, there's a one twenty five?
No.
Sixteen thousand cars each day.
That's that's thousands of traffic, trash trucks carrying two million, one point four million cubic feet of trash. Massachusetts up to Rochester, Turkey. We'll add and vote for that.
So the other, there is one other one I wanted to talk about, or at least kind of pull the board from an opinion standpoint, and it's around the lot density sizes. So we talk a lot about what we get or the character of Barrington and what that looks like. Sorry, that's mine. I'm like, I didn't realize it was.
Jeff, are you unhappy with you?
It's on vibrate. It's not ringing, it's just vibrating.
I'm sorry, your phone distracted me.
Yes.
You was saying something?
So when we we talk about lot sizes and maintaining rural character of Barrington, one of the things that we see happening is. People coming in and developing either larger parcels and doing conservation subdivisions, cramming everything in there and. Pedaling it from a density standpoint. Relentless. Different number. Uh, pedaling it from a density standpoint, saying, oh, look, we can get eighteen lots in here on a normal layout, so we want eighteen or seventeen lots. Consolidated in on a, you know, on a one acre lot. Blah, 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 blah. But when I think about, when I think about what a rural community is supposed to be. It's not an eighty thousand square foot lot, it's not one point eight acres, are we? One point eight acres is not rural.
Three acres, five acres.
Right, right, like, should we be? And I guess that's what I'm wondering is, like, how do people feel about doubling? Going from eighty to a hundred and sixty? Well, it's not gonna impact a ton of places in its current buildout. When you look at it, the number is gonna be fairly small, but what it stops is the sale of a large parcel to be built out into. A random neighborhood stuck into an area.
Well, I know you're calling me a master, and you know I've been in for so many god years, but that's.
For example. A Malago Road, when they're putting in, they're gonna have to put twenty six acres of conservation. So, which would be good for the neighborhood.
Yep.
That they're gonna give them access, so if we fill this plan fifty percent, well, they couldn't do it because they thought below fifty percent. If each unit had to have a hundred. Whatever, two acres instead of. The conservation requirement, which is less, it's less than an acre, isn't it?
Or conservation?
No, they gotta show they can put in, they can, they didn't meet the requirement of the eighty thousand square feet, they have to show that.
Right. So they they would do their plot yield, it shows, okay, I could get naturally get, say, on twenty six acres, you'd be, what, three and a half acres a site? Be putting in roughly eight, eight houses. So, I mean.
Also, we should plan, we have a layout, we need the block requirements, that's the first step, that's the program.
But you could still do it, it's just the build out would be a whole lot smaller. What it does, it actually would slow down or discourage developers from coming in and blowing up your town.
Well, the, you know, let's not forget that if we do that, landowners will kill us.
But will they?
I think, because if I have, if I have a ten acre parcel and you, if driven me from, I can subdivide up to five acres, five lots of big money. And now I can only subdivide three or two.
But you're wrong.
Well, it's the one we just did on Scuton Pond Road, the three houses, he screamed in there, he just barely made it. You wouldn't be able to do that.
No.
None of those lots would pass.
Ron's example is a little egregious from the standpoint that once you go above three, now you've got to build in a road, you've got to build a road to town standards, it's no longer a driveway. So.
But if I can do, if I can do something by three, you know, I can't anymore, I'm not gonna be, I'm gonna be very unhappy, it's kind of a taking by the town.
To a degree, I won't, I won't disagree with you.
You know, the property rights side of it, I guess, will be the argument for against.
But but this was voted on by the people to, at one point, to make it eighty thousand. So why would we not, or by a board sitting here having the same conversation, why would we not wanna? If the desire amongst towns to make it a rural character town. You you can get your density, but your density is in your village district and your town center. That drives your density to that space and keeps the rest of the town with its rural character that you're targeting.
Are you changing the frontage requirement?
From like what, the frontage?
Apartment up to two hundred, right?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
I think it's, to me, if you guys, you don't change the frontage requirement, then you just have long spinning lots that, you know, I still have side by side by side. And it looks the same to me, but I got the lots deep down. So I don't think it changes the rural character research.
With two hundred feet of frontage, you won't, I don't, I think you'd be hard pressed to get that, because I don't think, when you look at them, the existing lots that are there, if you look at the large lots. They don't have massive swaths of frontage. They're deep and they're expansive.
But I'm saying, if you if you if you locate, let's say I put.
Look at the one we just were reviewing.
Well, let me say, if I can do five in a row, and I can use two hundred square frontage, to me, it's gonna look the same. The two acres or four acres, because all the all the acres is gonna be in the back of the property undeveloped. You know, I mean, it doesn't look that much different to me if I didn't, if I don't change the frontage requirement.
Well, you're saying, if you put the home right on, right on the road. Instead of have all your property behind it.
Most people, because of the driveway and stuff like that.
It's expensive.
They would have put those houses, houses in the front, and they, all the acres is in the back. And if it's, you know, a really, really big lot, they don't even, they they leave it all treated and stuff, they don't do anything with it, they do a little bit of lawn and they leave it the same. So I don't know that four acres would look that much different in a lot of cases.
Well, maybe not in that case.
Right.
But in the case of now, you can't do a Malago subdivision, and we're preventing this cluster housing that everybody says is ugly and doesn't want.
Well, last, last time we put in, we 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 increased by forty to mag, to prevent the cluster housing, right? So.
Well, no, only in the, that was purely from a town center, village and a village district standpoint, because the set. The lot size or the requirement was once, after the first one, it was ten thousand square feet. And we changed it to forty.
Yeah.
And that was only in that region, that doesn't impact the broader town as a whole. So now what you have is you're you're starting to see the developers, as they're moving out, they're looking at where else can we do this? Scruton Pond Road, is it Malago Road? You know, it'll be as a beauty hill road, where is there, right, pond hill, where can I get a hunk of land that I can?
Jam.
Blow a neighborhood into? And because.
Subdivision of lots down to twenty thousand square feet.
Right, and that's, that's the, the problem with the way the.
The set on there, Anoel. Yeah, see that, but. That's what you have to have for the house.
Right.
But not for the plan.
Oh, yeah.
So the whole subdivision, so you wouldn't be able to, so essentially, you'd end up with more than.
So you would prefer the yield plan that they brought in on Malago Road? Remember, they, he showed two things.
Yeah.
He used all of Lena.
Uh, no, I don't think they would do that, because the build out cost would be too high, he's gotta put in way too much road and infrastructure. What it means is, he would never do that. What he's gonna end up doing is he's gonna put more into conservation, and he's gonna consolidate the houses more into that front section. And then he's just gonna have a, he's gonna have the two lots up front.
The circle at the end.
They're always gonna do the two that are up on Malago, that they're gonna put those there no matter what, because that's easy pickings. And then they would just do whatever they needed to as a bare minimum to get in and do a small cul de sac that houses. The other six houses, so to speak, and then the rest would all get plopped into conservation if they were gonna do.
So what do you think?
For discussion. For like discussion?
Yeah, yeah, they were just using that as like a discussion point to create a real time example that you could.
What are we talking about, eighty to what?
I I'm just, I was just throwing out a number of one sixty, like doubling what you're at. So you go from one point eight to three point six.
I would not support that, and I wouldn't even, not right now, I mean, maybe for further discussion, we flush it out or something.
Well, and I guess that's the question is, what's an acceptable amount when you talk about rural character?
Right. Well, as I said, some towns, I think it's hand over, has certain parts five acres.
Right.
You'd have to look at, yeah, the communities, that would be like what we are, so you're not like arbitrarily like making up a number, for example, but like. It's two acres.
Two acres. And it and it got brought down to one point eight.
Storm waters and stuff, it's gonna start happening. You, you know, we have MS four that we're worried about, we're thinking about, we need to think about that when we talk about density and housing. Um, these houses, the townhouses and everything, that's a lot of runoff, that's a lot of parking lots, stuff like that. Why are we wanting to pound our town with our water, you know, our wells and everything, when, when it's already been shown? That we're going into a warmer weather, we've got, we're gonna have hotter summers, we're gonna have warmer winters, where's that runoff? You know, we've got to worry about our wells going dry, I really firmly believe in that.
I, so I I don't think the well's going dry is gonna be an issue so much as when you start looking at the impact of. As you talked about runoff and septic loading, and you take some perfect example, as Ron pointed out, New Hampshire is an aging community. With aging community, you have more and more of your population on statins. Statins meaning like medications, they take blood dinners, like cancer drugs, things like that. Your body processes that material and it comes out. If you look at it, things that they're looking at now are the feminization of fish, the impacts of all that, even going to municipal water, they're treating this. And it's not cleaning up or treating the byproduct of the the drugs that we're processing in our system. So all that's making its way into that landscape and impacting what we have. So when you have a tighter density, you're creating a greater impact and a load on your soils and and around you, which also dictates, how does that move? Through a system? Like, if you remember when we talked about the. Asphalt plant, they were looking at where their their bedrock was and how you, they were, they looked at how the surface water moved across their bedrock. It's the same thing when you look at, you take your septic loading, and how does that shed across your ground and your surface water versus your groundwater and then? The other impacts like that.
Dover, lived there for fifty years ago, and.
You're not that old.
Thank you, and now look at it, you know, compared, and I can see it coming this way, I actually can see those, you know, people pushing one end. I love Barrington, and and this is just my, you know, personal opinion, I know we need growth, I do know we need growth, but I feel like it should be in the center or town center. And then, but but the people that want that, they need to be, to have that opportunity, that outside. And I'm gonna tell you too bad, I mean, Ron, I I get it, somebody has a good acreage, they wanna sell it, that's, that's fantastic. How many, how much money is in big partials in Barrington, how many, well, I mean, I don't know, I'm not saying.
Yeah.
If there's not many, I'm just saying, really, how many opportunities is there for? Big partials man? Subdivided?
Well, there's two ways, you know, if you look at them like sporting, I can speak to that point until, I mean, I. I could probably get comfortable on a thousand, but I don't know, I could go much more beyond that. Remember, to address the thing that Donna talked about, you know, if we could have, this doesn't get implemented right away, but it gives people time. You know, that it takes takes effect at some point, so if somebody's in the process of thinking about subdividing or something like that, they got a chance to hear about it and deal with it right away. That might help as well, I think, for me. So we we pass it down, but it doesn't take effect two years or something like that, as a, as an effective date or whatever, a year or whatever. So if I'm in the process and all of a sudden I feel like, you know, town screwed, you know.
Did we do that with the wetland buffers?
No. It was voted on and it went into effect.
And then there were people that were affected by it.
Yeah. Yeah. And now they're, they have to come in and request waivers, so they've gotta like.
But I'll point out, you know, the ten percent, the first two people roll through through there. No, no, we all, we, they're like, we, we didn't enforce ten percent because of new regulations, people, my house was, I was getting close to my house, now, we didn't. The segment didn't enforce any of them the first few. So I think, you know, I can hear what you're saying, but, you know, the other way doesn't work very well either, when you go whacking in without any notice of people.
Well, you can't say you don't have notice, this gets put in, like, this gets publicized, yeah, there's, there's town, I mean, there's town, there, we, we hold public hearings on it. I mean, it's, it's not a quick process, you're talking at least sixty plus days.
It's the morning after when the election, the war up goes through.
Yeah, they're like, what does that mean?
Why did you do that to me overnight?
I don't know, I think it's that, I think it's when I go to the Realtor and go, hey, we're looking to move, and I wanna. Subdivide this, and they go, oh, yeah, you can't anymore, because two years ago, you guys passed what?
I I mean, I'll be honest, I don't, like, if there, if somebody's selling and moving out. Does that really impact those, it doesn't, they're, they're leaving, they don't care, it's, they're not, they're not here, they're not impacting it anymore, and I can tell you, since I've been in town, I've seen the change. In this town.
And if they're, if they leave, then they're not gonna be here to vote you out either.
I'm not even worried about that, I'm like, I, this is volunteer, I can why. But, uh, like, those are the things that I look at, if we're talking about rural character. Are we really thinking about rural character and what that means to people? Like, we get yelled at when we end up with an eighty five townhomes coming in here, and people are like, how could you let that happen? Well, those rules were in place before we were here. This is the same thing, eventually, the point, the point of this being is what happens is, by time people realize what's happening and wanna change it. You're too late, the bullet has left the gun, you can't put it back in at that point. So, and even now, there's a lot that we've missed, and luckily, we have a lot of land that's in conservation. But this also starts helping address some of the issues where you have neighbors that are upset because they have a neighbor shooting on their property that they're legally able to do, and they're like, oh, what? How could I expect that, you know, how, I I hear their noise, I hear them, yes, they moved to a rural area before you, or whatever, so that they could do that.
Well, she should be shooting at red arms.
Yes. I wouldn't disagree with you. Yeah. But I mean, those are the the impacts.
Again, that's a, that's an exception to the rule, because that was just two neighbors that couldn't communicate, and they tried to use the PD to fix their problem. And then it's not the PD's, their, their job to do that, and then it became a flipful thing.
And it's not just two, it's been, there've been a couple that.
No, no, I'm just saying, if, if that example, you know. We are like the the trustees of a very small piece of of land, you know, relatively speaking.
Yep.
You know, out of the people square, Barrington, Barrington takes a huge amount of land, a lot of real estate there, but we can only use forty percent of it. You know, there's, there's too much stuff that's out there that that's wet, it's not buildable, it's not, not anything. So, yeah, so I mean, we only have a little tiny piece of a property, so how do we look at it? Do we look at it from a twenty story view and say, it looks fine from here, what do we get down into the nitty gritty and stuff like you, you're bringing up? If, if it works for this, and all of a sudden it it becomes these long, narrow bowling alley lots. That doesn't, that doesn't fix it, it does the exact same thing, like you're saying, it doesn't, so. That doesn't, that doesn't fix it, it does the exact same thing, like you're saying, it doesn't, so we, I think that. Instead of being really quick at making decisions, if we look at it, look at how it affects things downstream. You know, we put this into place, but it doesn't affect.
What's that? It would be, cuz then they could look at the regulations. At the public forum, you get these results. Now I'm pancakes.
When you look at it, there is not enough frontage for people to get long, skinny lots out of it, it just. When you look at what's here in town, there there, there isn't enough of it.
You say it's it's a little bit of a of an exaggeration, but it 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 is true, it's it's right. If if you're gonna put your, the the cost of asphalt or whatever it is, even all your utilities to get to that house, who you, that's what you do, right? So what's the difference between hundred-foot drive way and two hundred-foot drive way? It's it's significant, sure.
Yeah, probably fifty to so fifty percent more cost.
But if 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 I'm a, what what you're saying is younger people trying to move into town and whatnot. And uh, I'm gonna take a little bit of road noise over, it costs me another thirty thousand dollars to move back another hundred feet. And people are gonna do that, but if we don't have something in place to not say it's it's illegal, but but just sort of discourage that, you know, that's what we wanna do.
But if you look like um uh meeting house is an example of that, where they, they're like, okay, we're gonna put the back part into conservation. And we're gonna make the lot shorten right up front on on the road as we build it out, so they're doing that anyway, they're just. You just have no land tied to it anymore, they plop it all into conservation.
Well, meeting meeting house soda wasn't a conservation, right, it was a regular.
The one side of the street is conservation.
Yeah, the west side is.
Where it's up on the hill.
Yeah.
So I mean, I mean, that's an example of what I think Buddy and I are talking about, where, to me, if if you allow them to. Stick with the same frontage, I would say, if you wanna keep the rural character, don't let them take the trees out in the front. You know what I mean? Because once you kind of cleared it, cleared the lot, and you put the house in there, it's two hundred foot of frontage. I think it, whether it's two acres or a hundred, a thou- a hundred thousand, uh, hundred thousand square feet, it looks the same. To me, you know, once you clear the trees on the front, the house is right there, it looks the same. You know, it doesn't matter whether it's a make, you know, it's it's hundred thousand square feet or eighty thousand square feet, it looks the same.
But it's about density.
Right.
You're 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 ignoring the density piece of.
Well, I I I noticed it hap- it impacts since, in a lot of cases, but I believe it impacts every case. Anyway, I think I'm okay with a hundred thousand square feet, I think the feat, the feedback we're getting from the town is that. Increased density is not the way they wanna go. So I think your suggestion has merit in that, this is, this reflects the feedback we've been getting from the town. So, am I, I'm, am I good for a hundred and sixty thousand square feet? No, but am I good for a hundred thousand square feet? I think so.
It just seems like a number though, it's not, it's not like a completed acre, just what's, what's a hundred thousand?
Eighty's not a complete acre.
No.
Oh, builders eighty is one point eight.
So the eighties won't be at one point eight.
Perfect, a hundred thousand is perfectly.
No, 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 I mean, as it goes by. What's what, what's?
Forty-three thousand four hundred fifty-six feet.
Yeah.
But I mean, the people say builders acres forty, so when we say eighty, this to the one sixteen, those numbers make sense, but to go to a hundred, go to a hundred twenty.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
At least then you're. Right, I I would lean more toward the three side of it, that's what, I was like, okay, if you double it, you're getting closer to that rural character, but the. I mean, I was, my, I was, my original proposal on it was a five acre minimum lot, based on the fact that you. You get that, and there are, I don't think there are many, there are.
Three, would you increase the frontage on the road?
Could, I mean, I guess that's, those, that's why it's all up for conversation is, what do? If we're talking about rural character, what are we trying to accomplish with that?
I think we can't do this in March, so it's something to think about in the future, right? Conversation.
Got plenty of time.
Well, if it's a big project, it's gonna have different stages to it, I think you wanna have at least kick off the phase one. You know, have something that moves in that direction, and then you see the voters thing. Instead of putting it all into one basket, you know, get.
I think this is a good problem, that's why I wouldn't go real big.
I'd go with Ron at two and a half acres.
Two and a half and and two and two fifty.
Can I convince you the three?
In two fif- in two fifty.
What's the builder thing? I I think one twenty.
One twenty?
For you?
What about two fifty for frontage?
See, I I don't have a problem with the two hundred frontage.
Right.
I I.
I did.
I I, cuz I'm I'm looking at it more from a density standpoint.
The bowling alley hot spots, I don't like those, I don't like those.
Do you really think you're gonna see them now?
I think it's certainly.
Well, if you're two hundred foot frontage, when you get uh hundred twenty thousand square feet, you can see how deep it's gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, run the numbers, what's that number?
Yeah.
I mean, that's like, how deep is that gonna be, feet?
It's just for a calculation device.
You have one under your paper, lift up your paper. Nope, not your paper, Ron's paper.
Oh, I do, but yeah, it's it's solar and never works, I.
It always died on me. So what are you trying to do?
With a hu- hundred and twenty thousand square feet, two hundred foot wide, how deep is that lot?
Yeah, divided by the two hundred.
Six hundred, so it's three times.
And six hundred. That's, that's, yeah, I don't like that.
And and if it's two fifty, if it's two fifty, how much shorter does it get?
It's like, it's, you're only gonna cut off what, a hundred feet?
Well, two fifty by five is a lot better than two by six hundred.
Or eighty, yeah.
I'm all over the two fifty, man.
So it's double in the depth?
You gotta give me the two fifty mark, go anywhere else.
I I don't have an, I don't have a gripe with the, I mean, honestly, I don't, like, that part doesn't, the. The frontage, the frontage, I'm like, I could care less about, like, if that's what, if that makes you happy, I mean.
Let me.
So be it, but.
So is this something you wanna consider putting on? For now, or do we wanna, like, I know you guys are discussing it, but.
Yeah, I would like to discuss putting it on as a.
For, okay.
Two hundred by six.
Cuz I think it should be.
You said two hundred by six hundred?
Two, two hundred by six hundred is what it is, it one at a hundred and twenty thousand, if you do two fifty.
So we go, all right, now, and then to the two fifty front, oh, okay. So then it would be two separate.
Yeah, I think that's where you do it.
There was, there's no reason to.
So what is the justificate, I mean, the explanation or justification of the purpose of the amendment?
The purpose of the amendment is.
For for the first one, for to increasing the lot size.
To maintain the the rural character of Barrington.
What was that? I'm sorry.
The purpose of the justification for it is to maintain the rural character.
Everybody.
Which is the feedback that everybody gives.
I I think it would be. The who bus, if we could somehow, in that explanation, explain how.
Right.
Is gonna be affected.
You can add definitely more than.
To prevent.
Right.
You know, I I've already gotten texts from residents about Malago, cuz somehow my name got listed as, I'm the one doing it. What? So I get questioned about it.
I I have two, I've had three people stop me that are in and around like Stone Farm or on Malago that have. Specifically stopped to say, hey, what's going on here?
And your response should be, we could put a shopping center in there, it's allowed under the zone, no, really? With this, this. For me, it was more inquiring and.
Right, people asking, saying, what are they looking at?
Yeah, and then expressing the. Their concern about it, and yes, agreed, but I I guess that's my point, this will show that we're hearing what the people are saying.
Oh, I agree.
And we're working towards.
Right.
I said one, one thing about that word, to maintain. If you you use the word protect as opposed to maintain, protect, you're supporting the the current people. And you in, and you wanna protect.
Protect the rural character.
Say, as stated in the town master plan or something like that.
It reflects the vision statement in our master plan.
Guys have words something like crazy.
I was gonna say.
I don't know if we can ever go that far back, but, I I mean.
So, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the two hundred fifty frontage, would that be the similar? Not justification, but explanation of why.
I mean, does that make sense? Cuz I I keep seeing these plans come before us with, like, these crazy lot yields, and they're like, oh, we can. Look, we could do this, I'm like, you never would, though, you'd have to make the driveway come in off the neighbor's adjoining property. Otherwise, you gotta blast it right through a wetland, and you're never gonna do that, because, but the lot yields it because all the usable properties in the back.
Build a bridge.
And and I do hear what you're saying as far as limiting, cuz I'm all about landowner rights and being able to do what you want with it. But I can also say, in my uh neighborhood, we had a Realtor that liked selling houses. And every time somebody went to move, he looked at it and unbeknownst to the people, oh. We could, I've got a survey that could cut a sliver off, and we could put a house right here, and I can sell that lot, so now my neighborhood, you go down. And you've got houses facing all different directions except for the road, because the lot was this triangle thing not cut off. And it was all just helping the people that were moving out, they didn't even know they could have subdivided.
Right, and you end up looking like in in, not in Barrington, but I have friends who have a house, and they, they did all these backlots. So they got a narrow sliver coming in, you walk out the back of their house, and you're looking directly at the front of somebody else's house, and they're. It it's not appealing, it doesn't, I'd almost rather the long lot, where I don't have to look at.
They put that, yeah, it's just that woods, they call it.
I would much rather be able to walk out and look at woods than walk out and look at a a backlot house that's crammed in there and I'm looking at their front door.
Each one on the street has a driveway, the one to the house right behind. I think seventeen houses.
Yep.
They did a over by the, over by Greasy Way, it's a house.
Yeah. So I mean, that's what I'm, when I look at this and I think about, are we, are we helping our zoning in that way? Are we thinking about the impact that we're seeing? Like, those are the things that I I'm looking at on it.
Well, just, I mean, I I I hate, and I agree with it, but the people complain, you know, about the backlash situation, my, you know. You didn't pay for that view. You know, you 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 didn't deserve it, the guy who's got the property deserves everyone wants the land, so. You know, if you wanna, if you wanna look at the front of somebody's house, buy the land.
Kayla's side of the road they put in, and they put, I don't know, nice houses in there, but some people complain and say.
Yeah, I mean. Our property, I guess, something, your property rights.
And I think you've, you wanna protect people's property rights, cuz you don't want that there, but. Part of protecting the property rights is protecting the property, because by time somebody subdivides it. You, in in nine out of ten cases, they're most likely selling it and doing it. It's, it's not the like family that's splitting it off for a family parcel or something, and. If they're doing that, they're gonna do that anyway, but they're not building a neighborhood back there. They're giving them a a chunk to build a family plot.
So we're all set on that? Can we move on to the procedure, we hundred or hundred twenty?
Hundred and twenty.
I have one twenty with the.
Two fifty.
With a two fifty frontage. Um, before we move, I just, the green belt buffer, I know we were just discussing it, we're not proposing any language change on that one. Did I have that correct?
I think we should.
Or revisit it another time?
Put it in and we will vote on it and then based on the vote, we'll put it forward.
How did you, so what did you wanna change language? Cuz I heard several different things about like leaving it, or like. The trees are an issue, or maintaining it, like.
What we did last year with with the waivers, we drafted waiver language.
Right.
The plane board voted on.
Right.
I would say, let's let's put language in, have the have the plane board vote on it, if it's voted against, we won't move it forward to the. It's a warrant.
I see, okay. Thank you.
So I do have one other item for discussion.
Oh, sorry, I shouldn't have even.
No, it's fine, and it's, this is more just uh, our, and if you look at our 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 um. Zoning again, under four point two point two parent six, the architectural requirements.
Wait.
Which I think are always a hotly contested item for us.
Four point two.
Four point two point two parent six architectural requirements, and it says, non-residential structures must comply. With the design review standards prescribed in the site plan review regulations. Our, I feel like our design review standards are nonexistent for the most part. It just basically says it's.
Well, there's architectural standards.
With that proposal to do the ultimate thing, and he wanted to put colonial, he wanted to go see it through forty feet, to make it look very nice, you know, the. The ultimately wanted. And then we have, somebody opens a metal building in, right on our entrance to the town. Some people would say that's fine, some people would say, we wanna have architectural designs, something that looks rural.
Well, we referenced design, design review standards prescribed in the site plan regulations, but. Our design review standards are, I might be.
I don't even know where. The architectural requirements in the village district?
Four point two point two parent six, no, it just, it just says architectural.
That's a reference for the village district, standard of village district.
Okay, yes.
That's what it pertains to, there is, there are design standards, but I don't know.
Have we ever?
They're not enforced.
Right.
I'm like that way.
But that's what I say. Never, we have no accountability to it.
Well, but that one gave us the ability to, when the bank did their thing. That was the level we used to get them to change the design to be more New England.
I'm, I know, the whole argument is, we don't wanna have like a, like a Dollar Tree or somebody that comes in and has a standard platform. Or Dollar General that has a standard.
Well, a free port made McDonald's is a farm.
Yes.
Yeah.
That was a requirement, that was a, that was a.
This is, you wanna put it in, this is the rush.
Yeah.
And I I think this is the, this is the phrase that gives us the ability to weigh in on this.
Yeah, I just don't know if it really, what it, what it accomplishes.
You know, it gives us the ability to, I think it's objective, but I think that's okay.
Yeah.
You know, it gives you some, it makes somebody talk to us about what they're proposing, we can say, well, you don't comply with that. You know.
Well, but it says, it, I guess the point is, is it says, non-residential structures must comply with the design review standards.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't hold anybody to a design review standard, cuz we don't have a formal design review standard for it.
Well, but when they, they show the renderings and stuff, and they, you know, even though, even the uh. The residential ones, we said, you, we want a different character, we want this, we want that, we do that all the time.
We, right, we give.
We do have architectural standards, I'd have to verify like where they actually are, I thought they were. They're architectural standards. I remember seeing, there's a file, I've seen it, and I've asked several times, and they said, oh, don't worry about that, that's in the, we have it, but we don't have it, like. Not that you're not, you're correct, that we probably don't necessarily follow them, but there are ones that.
Under.
Exist.
And I think that, any point which you doubt it, they're a little bit soft.
Yeah.
But um, I think that's, they wanted the flexibility to. Be open to different designs, but still have some ability to, you know.
Be able to regulate that personally.
Yeah. So under four point eleven, which, under the site plan review is building in general appearance design standards.
Wait, you're not in zoning words now?
No, you moved to the site plan, because that's really where the, when you look at the site plan review regulate. Design review standards really kick in over more under the site plan review, which is building in general appearance design standards, four point one one, four point eleven.
It did come up with venture biosports, they were discussing about, there's a, it was back when uh, who the alarm was, he was on the phone. He made a special note that, that I'm doing this, and it's gonna look like a difficult task.
Yeah, and we had him do the overhand and stuff, we definitely use that as a wedge. To stick our nose in this stuff, and it's probably, I think it's for the good of the town.
Like, so when you look at it, it just, the general statement of it is, we encourage high-quality building design, which improves the aesthetic characteristic of the community. To allow diversity of building design and architectural styles to avoid monotonous. And bland buildings typical of strip commercial development and to minimize conflict between residential and commercial use.
And I agree with that. True.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I go this.
Yeah.
I I think that gives enough leeway, but gives us some leverage.
It's like our, we know what we see, we like it, you know, we don't.
And and I don't think that's.
And it's subjective.
It's subjective.
Well, there that isn't, like diversity, we can do anything, huh? Anybody can come in and decide they wanna do the metal buildings, right?
Oh, but that is like, you should say this is not, you know, the intent of that regulation.
It, but you can't hold any, you can, they can say, they can come in and and do it and they can say, no, I I think it does align with this. And.
But you know, we get the final say. I'd say convince me, I don't think so.
Yeah, so then you better have a darn good grounds to deny it on, because you will lose that appeal.
Well, I, I've even before I was on the board, when I watched, that was always my gripe. That you can't tell me it was kind of loose, I'm gonna put it on my building. And you can try even in this, but I'm gonna take you to court.
Right, you're gonna lose it every time.
And.
Are you gonna, you're gonna make a change. Everybody rolls in here, they try to dominate, it's rather than go to court.
Really? Well, and I guess, and that's, I guess that's my point too. Right now is general enough where it doesn't have enough leverage, so if somebody really wants to.
Fork it.
Toward they can, but it gives us some.
Well, let's say Elliot's building, he put all those doodads on the front that make it look uh, more pleasing for the road.
I think after, after that language, they wouldn't do that. They just wouldn't do it. So I think this language is big.
Do you really think that?
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, I I think people wanna have a nice looking building. They want.
Um, I agree with that.
Yeah, people don't build a building to look.
Going to pave the road. You know, oh, I.
Yeah, but it's two different type businesses. He's trying to draw customers in.
Right.
And do sales. He's not gonna have a dirt parking lot. He's, he's gonna want customers to pull into a paved parking lot with a nice green belt. And inside up front.
Your point is it's only ones that really don't draw customers, like, like Rock Island.
Exactly.
Okay, so my, my point is, we don't care about that. We wanna protect the integrity of the town. Whether they're trying to draw customers or not, our thing.
I just thought that is to support, but just a good approach for the town.
Well, I agree that the people who want to attract customers are more motivated to do that. But I think from the town's character's point of view, we don't care if we're trying to attract customers or not. We want good looking buildings in our town. That's the intent of the regulation. It does, doesn't matter, I don't care if we're trying to attract customers or not. We don't want crap buildings in here. We don't want, you know, we don't, that's, we don't want that to the character of the town.
Like, that being said, I mean, that same building is just a square rectangle metal building and you're saying Saint Colaire wouldn't. Put all those things on if we didn't have the policy.
Why do you like, I didn't like that building.
But, but he did and he wouldn't have had to, because we approved just the rectangle building down there. No reason we wouldn't have approved it there. Well.
Well, yeah, but you wanna be a town just full of.
But that's what I'm pointing out.
Yes, he would. We'd be here for another like three hours.
JV would be ecstatic on bringing these items up right now. Like, if he was on the phone, he'd be like, hand raising to chime in.
His head, his ink one too.
To be some character maintained.
In a town that's gonna allow six forty foot containers. Sitting in the center of town.
So, say that again.
In a town that is gonna allow six forty foot containers.
That hasn't been approved yet.
It's at the conservation commission in their last meeting. So it'll be here next, next one, right?
Yes, um.
So I wouldn't say we're allowing anything, that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's your, you're putting the cart before the horse. They've come through with a permit at this point.
If I had a horse, I wouldn't wanna pay a parking lot, I'm just putting it out there. You either.
That was my, that was my thought on, I like, from a language standpoint and it it hasn't bid us yet. It, it, there will come a point where it does and we're gonna end up with some hideous turd that we're all gonna be sitting here looking at going, yeah, we knew that was coming.
Maybe this is a regulation change that we can look at during, after the hot grant process, cause it's not just for housing, but it's also for, I mean, it's also for commercial, but I mean, like.
That's a good thing. Give us, give you.
Like. Has anyone ever driven through Woodstock, Vermont?
Yes.
If you've driven through Woodstock, Vermont, you know, like, they don't allow power lines in the downtown center area of there. And it creates this, I mean, it is, when people model like a quintessential New England town. That is what they always talk about. It's like, oh, look at Woodstock, Vermont. And um, and it does, it looks spectacular and they have. Very tight architectural standards.
Common they have right at the end.
Barrington has a great condition, but to Brighton, and that's why we have to direct it in the right.
Well.
You know what I mean? We're still young, really, as far as the building.
And and that's what I look at here is like, if you, if you plan for it now, you'll get it. If we don't, we're gonna end up.
That's a pedestrian town.
It is.
The sidewalks are going in and.
Yeah, just the middle school.
If you talk about building, if you talk about.
Till the elementary school.
But even think about the downtown center and how that's being built out. And you look at the, the architectural character of those buildings. Are you getting what, are you getting what is cost effective and economic to, economy of the build? Because that's what they can do and they can be like, oh, this, this meets that need. Or is it really gonna give you a downtown that people come into and are like. Oh, this is really cute and quaint. I wanna actually poke around and enjoy it as opposed to, it just looks like a manufactured downtown.
But a lot of these towns also have public benefits requirements. Ten percent of what you're doing, you have to provide something for the benefit. Whether it's a park, uh, in Boston, it's along the waterfront, it's all public, open to the public. And there's no reason they couldn't do that in the pantry too. We're talking about that area with the elderly proposal for the elderly thing was. And then what fifteen, because it's fifteen percent of it has to be set aside for town use, maybe in the gazebo, ten people. Um, you could have them fund that too. Unusual to have regulations, but they would have to fund public benefits. So what's the age to get in that place? I'll be fifty five in December, I'll place there. I'll sit in the gazebo.
Andy didn't like.
Yeah, but you're not gonna be happy because.
Andy didn't like.
We're not gonna.
I wake up every morning, I forget that I'm in church.
At least you'll have sidewalks to walk to the middle.
Right.
That's true.
You'll see Buddy out there in his slippers shuffling down the sidewalk.
Be shoveling a wig.
Yes. And I can tell you, like.
I used to sell it, my favorite thing in the world, because towns had a bottom.
Trackless? I hate those things.
Track is the best one out there.
Oh, but they're junk. They, they.
Stop.
I had one. Heard. They do not accomplish.
You didn't maintain it.
Oh, no. The amount of money I spent maintaining that thing was foolish. I, I made it sell it.
Hundred fifty grand, just for the tractor alone. And then Noah's spot, and then decided after things on, I had a snowboard, twenty, thirty grand.
Yeah.
You add a mowers and stuff, they, they wanna use something that they're gonna use all, all year long instead of just in the winter time. And now you spent four, five hundred grand on these things.
Yeah.
And. They don't do it with us.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. This is, we've, we, now we've, we actually have come off the rail series, so we're talking about trackless. Um, are there any other regulation items?
Cause he might could have some.
Yeah. Keep them coming.
This is kind of off the, off the topic, but it's nothing. When you had that treaty, you wanted to take time. Was there any option for you to do some sort of, like, was there some you could have thought, you know, think, hey, this isn't gonna work? I need, I need some sort of repeat.
So, well, so I really don't know, and I didn't pursue it, so shame on me. But it was based on, we had done, um, we had gotten permits clear. The lot out back, we can't jump to a sugar and ice, when they were clearing the lots, and they were doing the subdivision. And I wanted the tall tines closer to one twenty five. And because of the wording, which. Is the green belt maybe left in its natural state is sufficiently. So it's, it's an in-between time, I think, when it first started coming in and guys like, I'm not touching anything. Because of the policy.
There is a way around it. You have them declared hazard trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, which had I known it was almost dead, I'm gonna follow my boat, that's what I would have done.
Even when they're.
Get a new boat?
Quasi healthy, you know, and declared hazard trees.
Sorry. Well, it's a long story, but I had to collect the insurance and, you know, what they said, once you collect the insurance, that money goes and.
Well, there's two happy days in a boat owner's life.
No.
The day you buy it and the day you sell.
I'm waiting for an empty nest and then I'm getting my boot rash.
And and then, then it follows right back into bust out another thousand. I mean, that's how that works. All right, um, planning, planning board rules of procedure.
Yeah.
I had a question.
Yes, there's a lot of edits in here and I, not that I gave up, but.
Statute, um, talking about the fifteen day rule about, uh, getting the application to. Now the law says the rules are twenty one days. But we, but the statute also sets a time to decide to do less. We've decided to do less than the twenty one days.
We always end up getting stuff late.
So I'm glad that you brought it up, cause that's kind of a bone of contention of mine right now. I know that they changed it in our regulations to having a five days for. Five days for recent metals, for example. I'll use that as an example, not necessarily the initial. Like calendar, calendar that we go by. Cause when we get recent metals. A lot of times departments have to re-review it again. And sometimes if it's a larger project, CMA has to review it again. And then the applicant gets very agitated, well, I don't understand why you're not reviewing it promptly. Well, it's gonna take us more than five business days. Give an ample review for a second, some middle. So, um, I know that's kind of going off of like, maybe in the rules of procedure, but um, I would probably would like to add something in there and. Perhaps change something in our regulations.
All of the statute is twenty one days.
Yeah, okay. Cause it's, it's like stressful for me. And the farmer's like, well, we've always done it this way. I'm like.
What they do is, they do the twenty one days, when an application comes in, they immediately send a copy of that to their engineers right away. So the process starts now. There may not be a lot of details, but at least there's a place setting done at the engineering department. So we don't always say, you know, we're still waiting for CMA to get back to us and somebody's waiting for this, but then do the back and forth, so.
Well, you don't wanna send it to them and have them review it without having something to.
No, they, like I said, they got the application copy and then they wait for stuff to roll in, but they've already set a spot for it with their personnel.
And I see maybe where you're, where you're coming from for that too. So this is probably something that I would like to discuss with the board at a later date as like a technical advisory committee. Um.
In a lot of towns.
Yeah, like, um, so I've been talking to the state about possibly how to set it up here, but that would also include like having. Maybe it's just for larger projects, for like a major site plan review. So that way, you have a fee upfront where the engineer reviews it. People from the board, department heads all come together and it's a pub, considered a public meeting, like during business hours, but they all come together, review the plans and anything that's substantial. It's not necessarily like, I hate to say wasting the board's time, but like, things that could be ironed out before, like coming for the board for a full thing too. Um, I think it might be beneficial in some ways. Yeah, cause I know that I've been getting pushed back, what's taking so long and like the way that. I, this is me personally, and I know that things always, you know. Don't always maybe get a hundred percent checked or whatever, but I like to do the best that I can. And I feel like when we're pressured and having five days to do a huge recent metal, even though it says any recent metal. So that could just be pictures or that could just be something more, a big change. There's not really like. Discuss. And if we wanna do the twenty one days for RSA, just went back from like what we originally had in here. From a staff point of view, more time.
Right.
For us to do it. Um, would be better, but.
Can I ask why we added the third Tuesday in under the rules, under uh, regular meetings? For meeting requirements, this first Tuesday and third Tuesday? We always have the option to have a third Tuesday meeting, but if we put it in here.
No, that's true. Yeah.
Now it's a mandate that we have to hold them.
I understand. Okay. Yeah, someone's.
We put it in our procedure that.
Then it'd be, then you might be, I see where you're coming from. Yeah, okay. And that was a comment that came up. So the attorney also made her comments, but I got them after our sumetall. She asked about that too.
Yeah.
Glad you mentioned that, cause the language we're on that too, it was like first Tuesday and the third. It shouldn't be the first and third Tuesday.
Right.
None to the language.
I know, I, I confused.
I'm sorry. That's why it's a first draft, that's why it's a.
And just other grammar, um, under members and alternatives number five. Um. Also.
Hold on, let me, let me catch up to you, hold on.
You're on page five?
No, I'm on.
Article five, which would be, I don't know.
Page three.
First page, first page.
Oh, wait.
First, it's back to the beginning. In the beginning.
Oh, wait, no, not first page, what?
Page three.
Page two of, you're the one that you gave us.
Okay. Did you get a new one?
But anyway.
Okay, page, so.
Under, under members and alternates and then number five.
All right, let me find members. He's on an old, he's on an older version. Okay. Number five, okay.
Second priority members unless they are seated in place. Um, the language is a lot, seating together, but separate. But that said, do we really need that? I mean, Donna said over there, I don't, she's separated, not her. She's, she just said.
I feel like from, for them to be able, for an alternate to contribute, I feel like it, you, it's better if you're at the table anyways, but. I don't speak for you, but I feel like, you know.
Need together, but separate.
And, yeah, I don't know. And it might have been in the first one.
If, what if we had five alternates?
Well, I mean, the way they said the, they would.
So also, alternate member shall be seated together.
And Donald said that.
There should be.
Together. And I don't think we need language telling us how to do it. We do it automatically.
So should we take out, take it out then? Alternate member shall be seated together, blah, blah, blah.
Take the whole sentence out. We don't need any, one more language.
During work sessions, blah, blah, blah.
Wait, Donald sits.
I'm supposed to sit.
Wait, no, please sit at the table.
Better sit at home with a hot toddy and enjoy it.
Wait a minute, anyway.
And then other thing, too, Vanessa, you can, you can put on the thing, you know, the time invitation to public comment, I didn't see that anywhere. Was that in there? They missed it. We talked about it.
Three minutes. We need a three minute.
We did, but then, um, okay, let me go back over.
I think it said three.
Yes.
But then it was, my note saying like, well, let's not even do it at all, because then you're limiting people.
It's a public hearing.
No, we.
You're really restricting people's comments. To me, if you don't limit them, they just say the same thing over and over again. Give them a higher limit.
So let's see.
You said if they, if they wanted to get into something much more complicated, admit something ahead of time, be summary reviews.
No, I wouldn't say you only have three minutes at the meeting and say, if everybody else is talking, you can come back for another three minutes.
Yeah, I, I've seen, I've seen that happen.
No, yeah, I like that. Yeah, you can't restrict them only while they're here for an hour and a half or four hours, waiting to talk for three minutes. It's a public hearing. The public.
You can, you can.
Doesn't mean it can take ten minutes. I agree, maybe three minutes is fine, but given the opportunity.
The public hearing's good, okay.
If everybody else is having a vision.
You know, we, yeah, we did discuss that and I, I didn't put it in because there seemed like there was like conflict of.
To me, time I've been here, when I hear public comment, they get up there, they say the same thing over and over again for fifteen minutes.
Well, some people also have a rule that you cannot repeat what somebody else has said. If you have new information, we'll give you three minutes to talk.
I don't.
Don't repeat with.
Well, I, I think if I get the same thing from five different people, I, I'm okay with that. But I don't wanna hear, you know.
State is too ready.
Anybody else, I want the property and, you know, I know, I've heard, and that's, they get on the roll, they can say the same thing over and over again.
How long you been on this operation?
I remember.
Okay, see, I joined in April.
He was great.
If I'm over here, I'll probably be as jaded as you were.
No, I agree, it's on.
I didn't, I've watched the videos. Go on and on and on.
So Vanessa, i- is there something that would allow us, and and I know that you've got, oh, she's not here. Joyce, the.
Oh, she's here, she's here.
She's here, not here.
Yeah.
Um, that it's limited to fifteen minutes.
Right, a total of fifteen minutes for public comment.
You can put in whatever you want as your operating rules of procedure.
Yeah.
Other towns, I looked at some other towns.
The statute that says that you can't do that.
Actually, the.
No, I don't think so.
With the planning board in Tufton, but all of it said, you don't, no reason to have any public comment. It's a meeting of the board.
Right.
But that's the plan, that's the select board.
So we are. John was suggesting and say, okay, we're gonna have a fifteen minute.
So, do you want staff to time them, which is fine?
But no, no, three minutes, it's fifteen minutes total. You've got three minutes to speak unless there's nobody else that wants to speak.
I've, I worked at a different municipal, not in this state, but in another state where they did have time limits. They give like the presenter. For the application fifteen minutes. Anybody else had three minutes and you could only speak once unless it was. for the application fifteen minutes, anybody else had three minutes, and you could only speak once, unless it was, like I said, like, new information.
I have never heard.
But, I've looked around, like, other communities, Dover is like the only thing that has, kinda has something, but I didn't look at the select board ones, I just looked at the planning board.
It's a long time to talk.
It is.
It should be.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to think from, I can be a point of.
I can tell you my experience. After three minutes, I've never heard anybody else.
Yeah.
I've never heard anything else that was worth it.
Right.
The first three minutes, you get the whole thing. And then you just.
And what you can also say is, we encourage you to present written testimony. If you have more to say.
Yeah.
It will, that will become part of the record.
Yeah, I agree, like, once in a while, somebody has more, but in those cases, they almost all submit something in writing.
Right.
Then you can read it ahead of time, and then you read it, and then you ask, direct, you know, they can do this thing very quick, and then you can ask questions quick, and boom, you're done.
Yeah, because it kinda have that here, like, any applicant, any ambassador, any person would direct, it was the manner of testimony, person or in writing. So if they submit in writing, we typically read what they've written into record.
Limited in the three minutes of time. These meetings run long enough as it is, I think.
Yeah, so, um.
So you wanna.
I have no problem being the timekeeper. That's what you're looking for. I know, so let's move along, yeah. So, is it just for the public comment?
Yeah.
It's the only thing you wanna address at this, at this time, okay.
They presented the one, it's more of all than their.
Well, and sometimes they, it, like, the breakout of their case, actually, like, here's how we got here, here's what we're looking at, this is where our plan yield comes in, so there's some long drawn out.
Well, we keep that people come and present things that has nothing to do with the public board, there was that, that spa that moved, and guy who had all the pictures of tires and other stuff that was on the, on the lot, that has nothing to do with us. And we sat listening to all this.
Well, we killed that argument pretty quickly too.
No, no, he rambled on for quite a while, I remember that night, he had pictures he handed out to everybody, and he, he was like, like you say, Ron, a repeater. He kept going back to saying this, that, this is not, this is not our, our wheelhouse, this is not under our responsibility.
Right.
We need to talk to the, the PD or.
The zoning, it was the zoning. Go to the zoning.
I thought some of it was, uh, uh, tourist guest, or something like that too, because he was saying that this is a it's hurting into ours, because it's highly, we have thirty years, okay?
Yeah.
Move on. You control the meeting, so you can always say, next.
Well, Vanessa, Vanessa is ready to be the one with the book.
But, I'm gonna be like, three minutes is up, I'll say, Mr. Chairman, three minutes is up. Just by the timer, ding, ding, ding.
Are we, are we adjourned? Well, I have one more thing.
Absolutely, yeah.
And adding something to our rule of procedure, regarding site visits to our sidewalks.
Hmm.
I've checked a couple of communities, there's too wordy, but you can break it down, during a sidewalk or visit, other than observations of the site, no evidence shall be taken. And there should be no discussions of the evidence or deliberations. What shall refrain from making decisions on an application, and any comments, motions, or directions to an application should only be made at the public hearing.
I love that. Yeah, can I have your notes? So. I said, I'll listen to it later on the phone, if you're okay.
Running around telling people about the talk.
Me too, and I was just like, yeah.
So one of my questions on that is, how do we, how do we have?
Enforce it?
Well, no, like, there, like, there are, sometimes there are like legit questions you wanna ask and.
You absolutely do.
Understand.
Well, then you can say, unless it's a clarifying question, when we meet, again, because it's a continuation of meeting.
Right.
So at the next meeting, we can address these questions or concerns.
That's a whole until a meeting.
You're just gonna, yeah.
I agree with you, particularly in that one we just did down there, before, you know, the last, so that was my next question. Who was there, just you?
Uh, Andy was there, John.
I was there, I meant to be there, anyone there? Tony was there, and I left, really. For exactly that reason.
Well, you didn't miss too much.
You're just so frustrated that you couldn't ask something.
No, 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 well, I mean, I saw what I needed to say, I, I know that.
And the, the, but, one of the butters was there.
Couple of the butters.
Husband and wife were the only butters, the other people were there as citizens.
Well, Dan Ayers had butters.
Right, they.
And he stayed, like, walking.
He, I can, we could talk about here, but he has a situation.
Yeah.
Listen to that, the market desk.
I'll do a tear guy stuff. I had a.
Okay, any other items here?
Any other discussion you want me to?
No, I think that's all I have, but I don't know if that's something you wanna have.
I think that, that'd be good, for sure. Okay. Uh.
That way, it's like, it's like the Vatican running around, no fault all, no fault all.
Yeah, like, seriously. Um, I just wanted to briefly discuss, I know we brought it up before, um, there's a little bit more discussion.
It's in here.
Um, the impact fee study, um, I know that you said the board would, um, support it, we're looking at doing the public safety one, and possibly doing a warrant article with, um, the public safety, because they're gonna be asking for, because they have to do more design and engineering stuff, um. The cost that, the preliminary cost that we've gotten so far is about thirty-five to forty thousand to do an impact fee study, which is three times the amount of like, what my budget is. Um, so I thought, well, it would probably be good to go for a warrant article anyways, that way it's the people voting for, no, we're not just sending, but I just wanted, um, to get board support, I don't know quite at this time, if we're still pursuing it in March, but I know when I talked to Connor last week about it, he said, hey, can you just bring it up at the planning board meeting? And I, since I had this agenda not quite ready yet, I was like, oh, we can just stick on there, just to give you something.
Concord has a transportation impact fee. They look at their road structure, it's a capital item, with twenty-five to thirty-year lifespan. They collect impact fees to keep that capital asset up to snuff.
We've tried road impact fees before, but it's probably a different, though you said transportation, but.